I'd like to call back to order and reconvene the Lane County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Tuesday, December 15, 2015. And the first item this afternoon is Item 14A, second reading and public hearing for ordinance 15-08 in a matter of amending Lane Code Chapters 10 and 16 to add provisions for regulation of recreational marijuana, file number 509-PA-15-05687. And I believe we have Mr. Rust here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chair Bozovich, thank you for the record. I'm Mark Rust with Lane County Planning Department. As you just indicated, we're here for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance 15-08 to adopt provisions for the regulation of recreational marijuana. The Lane County planning file number is 509-PA-15-5687. And just a quick background, we were here in front of you two weeks ago on December 1st for the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for today. Prior to that, we conducted two work sessions in front of you, one in September and one in November. Then on November 17th, we held a work session and public hearing in front of the Lane County Planning Commission. At that public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended to you approval of the proposed ordinances with a few minor changes that have been made. And then, as well as part of their recommendation was for us to reconsider the language and the proposed regulations after they're adopted after the first year, to take a fresh look at them as things evolve in this proposal. There was notice of today's public hearing published in a newspaper and also mailed to parties in conformance with the applicable noticing requirements. We have also maintained an unofficial email list of interested parties and have been sending notices and updates to that email list. We have created a webpage for this topic and directed interested parties to that webpage. And all the written materials and notices and things are on that website. And lastly, I did just last week attend the OLCC Public Informational Meeting held at Lane Community College. There were over 500 people in attendance at that meeting. The OLCC did announce that I was there and I fielded probably roughly about 50 people with questions in a group kind of setting aside from the main meeting, provided information and informed them that this hearing was taking place today. So we've tried to get the word out, been engaging the community and interested parties. The criteria for today's hearing are thoroughly contained in the written staff report and recommendation that was published on November 23rd. They do include Lane Code Chapter 10, Section 315-20, Lane Code 12.005, 12.050, and Lane Code Chapter 16-252. So the recommendation before you today by us and the Planning Commission is for approval. Staff recommends you conduct the public hearing, consider testimony, and then ultimately we recommend the Board adopt the proposed regulations as presented. We do understand that there's some concerns about some of the regulations, and I'm sure you'll hear about some of that today. As you know, we've discussed before, we're under time constraint to adopt some regulations by the first of the year. And we are also as staff committed to revisiting these regulations once that's done. So with that, unless there's questions, I'll turn it over to you to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you. I'll just ask real quick if there are any questions from the Board for the staff before we move to the public hearing. Seeing none, then I'll just make note that this matter is a legislative process and the hearing is an opportunity for those present to enter information into the record. And the Board decision is subject to finding showing compliance with the applicable criteria as outlined in the staff report. Written materials that were submitted about this change prior to the hearing or even at the hearing today will be included in the record. So if you have written testimony as well as oral, you can hand that in to staff and they'll make sure it's included in the record. I will note that failure to raise an issue today will preclude your ability to appeal this decision in the future to Luba. So if you have something of concern, please raise it today or at least make it aware to staff in writing. And only persons who qualify as a party may appeal the actual decision of the Board to Luba. So part of the way you become a party is to participate in the process either by turning in testimony or testifying today. This is probably the easiest way. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I will just call people in the order they're signed up. We have several people signed up, so hopefully folks won't, if they hear somebody already raising issue, you don't need to raise it twice. It'll be on record as having been raised. So the first person I have signed up is Matt Nelson. And if you'll state your name and where you're from for the record, I'd appreciate it. And followed by Cassie, looks like Heckencamp. So Matt?
My name is Matthew Nelson, and I live in Eugene, Oregon. The issue I want to speak to is I'd like to see an amendment to the proposed rules allowing extraction and the processing on F2 in an ag building. I work for a renewable energy company here in Eugene. We work on turning waste to energy essentially. And then also, I'm looking to start a, or apply for a wholesaler's permit within the marijuana licensing. And some things I've come up against in both of these regards is the, how tight it is in commercial industrial real estate right now in Eugene with both of these companies. When commercial, you know, working with commercial Realtors, but you get an email to find out, you know, what's available in that 2,000 to 4,000 square foot commercial or industrial. By the time you get to go see it, it's gone. I mean, you pretty much have to see, agree to something sight unseen if you want to get into commercial or industrial real estate right now. The pressure is incredible. The price is anywhere from double to triple what it's been normally. It's gone, it's well over a dollar a square foot for a lot of these, a lot of these locations. Also, I want to say that it only makes sense for, to allow these producers, these farmers, to be able to process and extract in their own ag buildings. Essentially, what this does is normalize their techniques just like it normalizes it for other farmers, taking care of their own crops on their land so they can sell it for the, for the, to the betterment of themselves. It just, it simply makes the most sense versus making them take it off their site to have it processed somewhere else. So in that, I just think that an amendment to the proposed rules allowing extraction in an ag building in F2 is, should be allowed. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Cassie Heckencamp and then, looks like Cassie Peters right after that.
Thank you so much for coming in today. No, really, you're done.
He's joking.
My name's Cassie Heckencamp. I just bought a new property out of town, about 10 miles out of town. Beautiful property, there's no one that lives around me. There's a house on the very back of it that is in a rural residential. That makes my entire farm, doesn't work for this operation. I understand the reasons of why you want to have the rural residential, but I'm hoping that there's some allowances made. I made a huge purchase going in this direction, and now it's at risk. I'm going to read you a letter that my attorney wrote for me. I'm writing today to urge the Board not to prohibit all OLCC licensed marijuana uses within rural residential zones. This prohibition is overly restrictive and will cause significant economic hardships to residents of Lane County while also driving up demand and prices for suitable land zones where such uses are allowed. While OLCC licensed marijuana uses may not be compatible uses on all rural residential zone land, imposing a blanket restriction does not seem to be in line with the light-touch approach the county has proposed taking earlier this year. Rather than imposing a blanket restriction, I urge the Board to consider allowing the use on properties subject to certain requirements that would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community while allowing Lane County landowners the opportunity to employ their land for the production and regulation of recreational marijuana. For many people who currently have RR zone land that would be suitable for the production of marijuana, in fact, many people are already legally growing medical marijuana on rural residential zone land in Lane County, and they have invested heavily in their businesses. And the recreational marijuana market emerges this next year, it's anticipated that a large number of medical marijuana businesses will pursue licenses to grow recreational marijuana. However, the ban on medical, on marijuana uses in Lane County RR zones will prevent many landowners from entering this new market and will stifle economic development in Lane County's rural communities. I strongly urge the Board to consider allowing marijuana uses on the RR zone land where such would be compatible with surrounding areas. If we could make it so that there isn't special uses for the properties, we'd hope. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have Cassie Peters followed by Dick Pickett.
Good afternoon, I'm Cassie Peters, and I just wanted to echo what the other two speakers have already said. I think that the arguments that they're making are, I am in full agreement with those. I also wanted to address in addition to those, the 30-foot setback proposal for indoor production of marijuana. I've spoken to several people who are in a situation where they've purchased land in anticipation of obtaining an OLCC license and using an existing structure that's currently compliant with zoning setback requirements that will no longer be able to use their structures as is. And we want to urge the Board to make either, to just allow existing, to allow any structure really, to be subject only to the agricultural building setback requirements rather than a special setback requirement for marijuana production. OLCC already has in place a lot of security and safety measures and allowing people to grow marijuana just like any other farm business is with the, within the, along the line of the intention of the legislature to recognize marijuana as a farm use. So we'd like to ask the Board to reconsider imposing an additional setback requirement that would cause undue economic hardship to people who already own property and have made investment into these buildings to convert them or set them up to move forward with licensing that OLCC is going to start accepting in several weeks that requires these improvements to be planned for and made before they can obtain an OLCC license. I have a letter here that basically sums up our points, and that's it.
Thank you. Dick Pickett. Okay. And Jason Simon. Followed by Andy, looks like McWilliam.
Thank you for listening today. I'd like to address some concerns.
Jason, could you state your name and where you're from today?
Jason Simon.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to echo the sentiments of the last two speakers. I'm in full agreement with everything that they said. I think it would be very wise to consider their suggestion. And I'd further like to add some concerns about the restrictions for processing on F2 that was addressed earlier in this, I think it's, there's a lot of places where F2 may not be appropriate, but I think there's probably just as many, if not more, that where processing is done properly and legally and according to all the specified rules that are already going to have to be complied with. If it were to follow all the other normal setback rules, I don't understand why processing would be denied. It wouldn't be prohibited for a farmer to do other things processing, another farmer processing his product. And so it seems rather unfair and an economic disadvantage for us to be working with that restriction. So, thank you for considering.
Thank you. So Andy McWilliams followed by Glenn Carpenter.
Good afternoon, and I'm Andy McWilliams. I live up to McKenzie River and own property up there that's, I have property zoned, rural commercial, agriculture, and rural residential. And I appreciate the hard work that the Planning Commission has gone to to make this recommendation to the Commissioners, but I am opposed to the outright ban of recreational marijuana on rural residential zoning. Lane County voters overwhelmingly approved the recreational use of marijuana in November of 2014 with Measure 91 passing by over 60 percent. The state legislature did not believe it necessary to restrict the production of marijuana on residential, let alone rural residential property when it passed House Bill 3400. OLCC did not believe it necessary to restrict the production of marijuana on residential property when it promulgated the rules governing recreational marijuana, OAR 845-025-1000. Why then is Lane County proposing to exclude the production of marijuana from all lands designated rural residential when said use would otherwise clearly fall within the permitted uses under Lane Code 10.130-103? That is, quote, "general farming, including the growing of trees, vines, shrubs, berries, vegetables, nursery stock, hay grains, and similar food and fiber products. No other crop is singled out like this." The proposed ban is counter to the purpose of the rural residential designation, which is to provide opportunities for persons who desire to live in a rural neighborhood setting. It arbitrarily diminishes the value of rural residential property in Lane County and puts its residents at a disadvantage compared to similarly zoned property in other Oregon counties. It likely has unintended consequences such as dictating how the owner of land with multiple zoning designations makes use of the land, even if the dictated use is not best for the owner or surrounding properties or natural areas. Why would Lane County make a blanket prohibition of the production of marijuana on rural residential land when such land might be well-suited for this growing business? If Lane County has legitimate reasons for restricting such use on this land, it should do so on a property-by-property basis and at least provide for said use through a special use permit as it proposes for industrial and commercial zones. This would allow reasonable persons to come together to make reasonable decisions rather than an arbitrary outright ban with no justification. I urge you not to pass this outright ban on the production of marijuana on rural residential land. Instead of stifling your constituents' economic activities and devaluing their properties, I ask that you empower them and allow a use that has the potential of bringing significant money into Lane County. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right.
So Glenn Carpenter followed by Chris McAllister. McAllister.
Hello, my name is Glenn Carpenter, and I thank you for this meeting so that we have a chance to voice our opinions. Number one, I'd like to ask a question. How did this restriction get created? What is the cause?
We're here to take testimony, not go back and-
I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to be objectionable. I'm trying to figure out, I never even heard of it. So let me-
It was compliance, is what I was hoping.
I could talk with you more about that after the fact if I-
Okay, and that's, so I'll tell you my story. I live on a rural residential property. I've been there for 26 years. We have a, we own a private road. 12 families live on that road, and we own 640 acres. My property also backs up to F1 forest production of another 350 acres. I never intended to grow recreational marijuana on my property. We grow trees, we farm somewhat. I'm a professional woodworker. I take wood off my land to make furniture. But I've been part of the OMMP, Oregon Medical Marijuana Program for 15 years, and I provide for four patients. They range in age from 60 to 80. And when the dispensary program was created, we were able to take a small amount of our excess, sell it to the dispensaries, which was able to offset our cost of providing a free service to these people. My patients have cancer, Parkinson's, MS, and glaucoma. And when I heard that we would be able, that the OLCC was going to allow people who grew medical marijuana to opt into the program, I felt quite encouraged. But now that I live rural residential, they're saying I'm prohibited to do that. And that's going to cause a hardship on my patients and many others. And I hope you people will reconsider the restriction and maybe take case-by-case exemption for people that have owned their properties as long as I have. Thank you.
So Chris McAllister followed by Nicholas Wood.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Chris McAllister. I live in Springfield, Oregon. I am a medical marijuana patient, advocate, producer, and grower. I am here for a couple reasons. One is I think that we should consider removal of emergency clauses. I understand that there is a short timeline, but there's due process. And a lot of these changes have come from lobbying efforts at the state level as well as some groups such as League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties. Having said, I think we should consider having a focus group with this sort of situation and allow producers, allow landowners, allow community members that are concerned to give advice on what is the reality for their world. A lot of this stuff is coming from guessing, from political maneuvering, and from suggested legal protections, but they aren't really cohesive with actual practical use or production. Whereas I separate, I support the separation of programs, legal adult use and medical measure, or, excuse me, Measure 91 also reaffirming that separation. HB 3400 and lobbying efforts by the League of Oregon Cities and the counties has made it to where they are combined. The results of dispensaries being bucked from lands due to results based on Measure 91's results, that's problematic for going forward. Knowledge and participation by county officials is crucial leading up to this time, whether it was about the dispensaries, whether it was about legalization. Contacts to the county have gone either, I don't know, not our problem, or we aren't there yet. This is problematic for trying to offer feedback and support to justified and reasonable regulation. When we were considering moratoriums, we said that we didn't have enough money to send deputies out to help rural people. How are we going to enforce rural regulations if we can't even go help them if they're in trouble? We were told that there's a number, 503, that we can call if we need help. That was at the last moratorium meeting. That being said, for next steps, we need to watch out for vertical and horizontal precedent setting. Counties around us setting rules, they aren't us. They don't know our people, they don't know our situations. I think we should consider steps that represent Lane County. And I'll leave you with this. We legalize without regulation, we regulated without participation, we participated without information, and finally, we informed without education. How can we fix things if we don't know what's really happening? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Nicholas Wood followed by Brian Michaels.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Wood. I live in Florence. Just want to state that I am for regulations so we can be legal, but I am against anything that would be beyond the state's regulation. Thank you.
My name is Brian Michaels. I'm an attorney here in Eugene, Oregon. I think we've all sort of met in different environments. I have two issues that are on the agenda today that I'd like to address. One follows what many of the previous speakers have talked about. As you know, I represent a lot of dispensaries and people trying to get into the legal recreational marijuana business and industry. And as you probably well know, there's a lot of counties and cities around the state of Oregon who have decided to opt out of allowing these sorts of industries to prosper. What in my view this creates is what I call intra-state tourism, which is to say that those counties who are wise enough with enough foresight like Lane County to be friendly rather than hostile to this new industry, will see an influx of people from around the state where their municipalities have opted out. And they will bring their money, they will come here, they will buy their marijuana, they will stay in a hotel, go to a restaurant, do shopping, and we will get part of the sales, well, not sales tax, but part of the marijuana tax that comes from the state. It's a huge, huge economic boon to any municipality that decides to favor this new industry rather than become hostile towards it. With that in mind, it seems a little inconsistent to, on the one hand, welcome this industry and on the other hand, try to limit it. Rural residential growth operations would add and assist in the inventory for, pardon me, for dispensaries that are going to be selling marijuana to people around the state. Remember, even if you're a city or a county who opts out, your residents are still permitted to use and possess marijuana. So they will legally come here and they will legally return to their opt-out municipality with legal marijuana. There was no crime committed. It's an intra-state tourism. And all the benefits economically that come with tourism, shopping, restaurants, hotels, shows, will come along with that. Why curtail the wisdom and foresight that you guys have chosen to welcome this industry by limiting the amount of economic prosperity you can get from that wisdom? The second issue I want to talk about is one that we have all kind of met about before. And that is your-
Hey Brian, we're going to have a second public hearing on that ordinance. If you want to wait till then, I'll be calling for testimony when we get to that item.
Oh, okay. Thanks very much then.
Same one that Michael's already signed up for.
Oh, okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So that was everyone I had signed up to testify. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on, if you'll state your name and where you're from for the record?
My name's Joshua Welpley, and I'm from-
Can you wait to, wait to your mic because that's how we get it recorded.
My name is Joshua Welpley, and I'm from Eugene, Oregon. I'm not under jurisdiction for Eugene, Oregon, that's why I'm here. Thanks for having the Commission today and going over this, but there's some things that are kind of frustrating. I'm glad we're able to speak about it. But on the flip side, it's frustrating that we even have to talk about this. The state has already allowed it, and we need to just continue with what the state has put in with residential rural and move on from there. The heart of Lane County is already processing land use forms. I got ahold of the city of Eugene, and they told me that they've been processing for a little while now. So if the heart of Lane County is already processing them, why can't the county do it? So Eugene's allowing it, it's the center, but yet there's this ring that we're putting around the outskirts called residential rural, which we're thinking about not allowing. To me, that seems a little bizarre. The voting stuff, everybody already went over that and mentioned that it's overwhelming in Eugene and in Lane County. I also spoke with Mark Rust, and he was a very helpful- I also spoke with Mark Russ and he was very helpful with letting me know this was happening and going to be here today. But one of the things he told me was there was complaints about odor. There were also complaints about the security issues that might be impactful on the, on the area. And as far as I read it, the state has said that there's going to be a fence, a camera, and signage that needs to be put up. So if that's a security impact, I can drive down any street in Lane County and I can see those same things. So to me, that's a non-issue. The second thing is smell or odor from the plants. If I can grow four plants, if the wind's blowing the right way, it's a nice sunny day, you can still smell it regardless of if I'm getting, if it's for business or for personal use. So to me, that just seems a little bit bizarre that we're separating the two based on if you're making money off of it or not. So there's, a lot of the things that everyone's already touched, but in my particular situation, I'm completely surrounded by EFU to my north, south, and my west. To my east is the city of Eugene. So I can be completely surrounded, but I can't participate. To me, that seems really bizarre. I don't understand it. It does seem ridiculous. So I know you guys are going to make the right decision and I appreciate the time to be able to speak to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to come up and state your name for the record and where you're from?
I'm Mike Reddian, Eugene, Oregon. Gentlemen, I just want to make a few comments just in favor of what I am finding in the industry, and I am in the industry. Some of you know me as a longtime businessperson, community member and committee supporter, and I sit on several nonpartic boards. Stepping into this industry, I am finding a real groundswell of people who really sincerely want to follow rules, regulations, do whatever is necessary, cross every T and dot every I to do the right thing. I've also found in this industry that there is real sincere medical use for marijuana. I didn't know that back in college, but I'm finding that the OLCC in their presentation just a few days back, Marvin Revol said, "We are sincerely interested in your success. We have to set rules and regs in adherence to the Cold Memorandum, but within that scope and within the Measure 91, we want you to be successful." As a businessperson, a resident of Eugene and a resident of Lane County, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about jobs. I'm thinking about prosperity. I'm thinking about the replacement of the whole timber industry and that type of revenue. Marvin himself said, you know, he'd like to see this become the Napa Valley. There is an opportunity because of Eugene and its reputation to be a standout and a real center of a new industry, a new legal industry, and we need the help of your commissioners, not hitherto. Think about the jobs, think about revenue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this subject?
I'll make it quick.
Thank you. If you'll state your name and where you're from for the record.
I'm Jim Murphy. I'm from Junction City, Oregon. I'd like to point out that there are complaints about smell, as you know, but I would like you to consider the tens of thousands of peoples that don't complain and how many of those complaints are driven because of fear of lawbreaking, which is now off the table for the most part. I would also like to recap that Lane County, you guys will come to find out, we are known for some of the greatest products on the planet. And you'll find that that's true as we move forward. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for this time. My name's Jeremy Wheeler. I'm from Eugene, Oregon. I also own a dispensary in Springfield. Recently, we've hired five new employees since the recreational marijuana has taken hold. We're planning to hire a bunch more. So I guess one of the reasons I'm here for today is to reiterate what some other people have already said here as well. Lane County, from its reputation of a hardworking community that's liberal, for, you know, looks to do the urban thing, you know, it's just hip and urban. But I think like the other gentleman said, with your guys' help and other smart people in this area, we could definitely come together and create a hub to bring a lot of people in from other states to do the scientific side of this as well as just the recreational side of it. There's a lot of sides of marijuana within the medical side that seem to kind of get the pushback right now while we're waiting for this tax side to come through. So I guess what I'm here to say is I hope you guys kind of look at this and the rural residential side and the people in the outskirts, allow them to come in and enter into this. A lot of people have a lot of money, a lot of roots built in this community, would like to participate in this, and they can't just get up and go buy a million dollar farm or relocate or do things like that. So I'd like to ask you guys to think about the people that have been longstanding residents here, have roots tied in the community, and this type of ordinance would just allow them to keep in their home and open their business. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm also going to close the public record at this time. And we'll move on to deliberations and actions by the board. Mr. Stewart.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Mark, at first reading of this, there was some inclusion of language that would allow for processing on F2. Is that still in there?
It is in there, correct. And that does address one of the first speaker's concern about allowing processing in the F2 zone.
Okay.
So that language is part of what's being considered today.
Okay. And that's part of the recommendation for approval or aside that needs to be added in?
It's added in and it's part of the recommendation.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Lichen and Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, I'm not asking to ask for a, for a long answer on this, but there's a question brought up between what goes on in the city, what goes on in the county. Can you maybe, maybe provide a brief description, especially, and also can you let the audience know and understand that if Washington and Colorado have a same style of SB 100 land use system set up as the state of Oregon does, and can you maybe talk about the difference between land use related to city, incorporated cities compared to county? I know I'm not asking for detail because we'll be here all day long, but maybe answer the first question about the difference between Washington, or Washington, Colorado and Oregon? Because if memory serves me correct, Oregon is the only state in the country with this, with our land use system, not the way that, so if you can maybe respond to that real quick, because I think that will help folks understand. And go ahead and answer that and I'm going to have one more question for you.
Sure. So I think what you're asking for is, just briefly, Oregon is probably one of the most heavily regulated states statewide driven land use planning programs. Washington does have a somewhat similar program. However, in fact, I was just at a legal seminar last week and they compared Oregon to Washington and Oregon was found for the most part to be more strict. So the state of Oregon is highly regulates resource land, so farm and forest zones that also regulate exception lands, which are the rural residential zones and the rural industrial zones. So we are operating in a much more stringent environment from that regard. I think part of your question too was the difference between the city and the county. The way the statewide program is set up is that essentially development is supposed to happen in the cities. And for the most part, development is not supposed to happen out in the counties. It's supposed to be resource land used for farm and forest uses. So that's a very generalization statement, but, so it's more difficult for us in the county to permit new types of uses than it is in the city. One of the comments about the difference between the city and the county too, and I'm not sure if this is part of your question, but in terms of already processing the applications, we have not started processing the Lux or Land Use Compatibility Statements from the state yet. We're gearing up to do that beginning January 4th. We're not quite there yet. We will be ready, but part of our perspective too is that the use isn't actually allowed until January 4th. So if we were to try to sign off on a Lux today, we would sign off saying it wasn't allowed and it wouldn't really do a whole lot. So anyway, that touches on that piece too.
That's, that's good. I mean, that, that gives a snapshot so folks maybe can get a little understanding of that because it is confusing. And I represented a city and I represent a county. And about 30 years ago, an attorney general by the name of Dave Fromeier really worked hard to create a goal 20. Legislature wasn't interested and so we do not have a goal 20 today. And that would have dealt a little bit more with, with county development. The other question is related to Measure 91 itself. Was there a land use component added into the measure or do we know?
So I didn't follow Measure 91 real closely, but when the legislature adopted House Bill 3400, I did follow the House Bill 3400 and it drastically changed from the original Measure 91. So all of the rules and legislation put in place through that bill is considerably different from the original measure that Oregonians voted for and passed. So the House Bill 3400 does include land use components and where, again, I don't know specifically about House Bill 91. I don't believe it did specifically.
And I believe that 3400, there's another word for that because I was able to have a conversation with a couple legislators. It's called kicking the can down to local government. And so you're here because the legislature really didn't want to deal with it. So you're here to, because they kicked it, kicked it our way. And so we're going to deal with it the best we can, but, and the other thing I just want to say is I really appreciate the testimony. I think it's important because here's the reality. This is, this is all brand new for us. And it's brand new, I think, for all of us. And as we go through this process, I think it would be probably wise for this board just to put some things in place so we can maybe take a look at this at a, you know, I'm not, I don't think six months is, I think that's probably too quickly, but maybe on an annual basis, take a look about where we go from here, no matter what decision we make. But thank you for the, for responding so folks get an understanding of, of the, of the land use system, what we're dealing with and, and where we are today compared to where we're at. Thank you, Mark.
Commissioner Swanson.
Thanks a lot. Mr. Russ, I wanted to just ask a little bit about where this measure stands right today. First of all, with regard to production, growing of marijuana on F1, F2, and rural residential lands, is that all allowed then under the proposal that's, that's, we're having the hearing on today?
No.
No. What part of that is not accurate?
So the RR, the rural residential piece, we are proposing to not allow production or growing of marijuana in rural residential zones.
Okay. So as it stands now in front of the board, if the board were just to approve it as written, it would be allowed for F1, allowed for F2, not allowed for rural residential?
Correct.
Okay. Now, regarding other agricultural products that can be grown in, in rural residential, what other agricultural products cannot be grown in, in rural residential?
So we list the use of farm use as an outright permitted use in the farm zone and the forest zone. That's defined by state law, what farm use includes. We do not list that use, farm use specifically, in the rural residential zone. We list what we consider a subset of that and we, the list as it's listed in the RR zone is raising and harvesting of crops. And it goes on to talk about animals, livestock. And within the rural residential zone, we do limit some of those uses. So we don't specifically limit any crops from being raised and harvested, but we do limit, for instance, the amount of livestock you can have in the rural residential zone.
So you can, you can grow any other type of crop in all three of those zones, rural residential, F1 and F2?
Correct.
But what is restricted in F, in rural residential are, is livestock operations?
Yes.
Like you can have a pig, but you can't have, let's say, a confined feeding operation of thousands of pigs?
Correct.
Okay. What's the rationale for treating marijuana differently than other crops?
So I'll just start with one is that the state legislation or the rules give us the ability to enact reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. So that's where we get, I think, the authority to do that. The other part of that is the state themselves is treating marijuana as a crop drastically different from any other crop as well. So we're taking the lead from them on that. And then based on the feedback we got from the board originally from the work sessions we held and the concerns and input we had on issues of safety and also impact. So the idea is that the rural residential areas are essentially the most dense areas in the county where the most people live and reside. The lots are smaller, albeit they may be an acre or two acres. There are smaller properties as well as five and 10 acre pieces, but they're more like a neighborhood in some cases. So that's the, it's the biggest opportunity for there to be the greatest impact to the most people in those rural residential neighborhoods.
Okay. Now, I asked a bunch of questions about growing marijuana. What about processing marijuana? Are there limitations on where marijuana can be processed under the ordinance that we're dealing with today?
Yes, as well, there are. And I, on the processing in particular, as well as the retail outlets and the wholesale distribution of it, the, the rules and the House Bill language itself specifically will not allow processing, wholesaling, retailing from property that is exclusively zoned residential, which is how it's worded in the bill. It's not entirely clear what that language means exclusively residential.
So that's not part of this ordinance because that's just covered by state law?
Correct. And we have not proposed to allow those uses either in the residential zones.
Is that something that the board has authority over or is that something that's decided by state law?
I guess the answer would be yes, from my standpoint. I think it's up for the reasons Mark just mentioned, that the legislation gave that amount of latitude to the counties.
Yes, it's within the power of the county to regulate processing on rural residential?
Correct.
So it is within, and what does the proposed ordinance say about that? Not allowed? Processing not allowed?
In rural residential, in front of you today, correct, yes.
Okay. So it's going to take a, a motion to amend to allow the processing and the growing, if that's the, if that's the direction the board wants to go?
It would be a revision, yes.
Okay. And that's been most of the testimony, hasn't it, about people that are in the industry want to have more land available, including rural residential land?
I didn't specifically hear any testimony in regard to allowing processing in the rural residential zone.
Just the growing?
No, processing is extraction.
Yes.
Yes, just the growing.
Just the growing.
Yes, right.
Okay. Good. Okay, thank you very much.
So I'll just clarify one more time. The legislature completely amended Measure 91 by passage of House Bill 3400. And in that bill, they specifically delegated authority to local jurisdictions to place reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions through land use laws. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
And possibly the reason there was some testimony that OLCC hasn't added any of these restrictions is because OLCC doesn't have that authority to place those it was actually placed upon down to the, the local jurisdictions. So I just, you know, there's some, you know, there's some testimony that basically said, well, the legislature didn't restrict it. No, they, they basically just said, you know, we're not going to deal with that. We're going to let the local jurisdictions set time, place, and manner. And the reason OLCC hasn't dealt with that is because the legislature specifically said, you guys are going to deal with all the licensing and other aspects. The local jurisdictions will deal with time, place, and manner. So if there's, if there's some question as to why that was never, hasn't been dealt with till this point, that's because, the second thing that was in House Bill 3400 was they only gave us till July, till January 1st, 2016, to put these laws into place. Now, they passed House Bill 3400 in May, June, was it? You know, so they gave us a very short time period. We started working almost right away as a county on time, place, and manner restrictions. We've actually had advertised, you know, board work sessions and our, our planning- We've actually had advertised, you know, board work sessions, and our Planning Commission has worked on this and advertised and opened public hearings prior to this, but we are on a set deadline. And one of the things they did say was, after January first, you can't put anything more restrictive in place. You can let up on restrictions, but you can't place anything more restrictive without going through a bunch of extra hoops. So, we've got kind of a one-shot deal as a local jurisdiction to deal with any conflicts of a new industry coming to Lane County. And that's why we're here today, because one of the things we have dealt with since the medical marijuana industry has grown and changed, is there has been conflict between growing and processing the marijuana and rural residential, you know, folks in Lane County. That's been probably, you know, as a rural commissioner, one of my number-one complaints every fall, and we all know why it's in the fall, is odor and conflict issues with marijuana grows, legal medical marijuana grows. I will say, nothing we do today will change anything relative to medical marijuana. We have no jurisdiction over medical marijuana, nor will it change anything relative to personal use and growing of recreational marijuana. We're not allowed to touch those. Those are things that state law said, you have no, it's the commercial growing, processing, and retail sales of recreational marijuana. We have been given an opportunity to manage time, place, and manner to avoid conflicts between industry. Like I said, we've got a January first deadline. We can always go back and get lesser restrictive with the rules. So, I just want to just kind of bring everybody up to speed why we're here, you know, part of why we're here. You know, I heard some, you know, testimony about security. It's not about the security people are going to have on their properties, it's about the attraction of crime to those possible grows, because until federal law changes about banking, marijuana is a cash business. And the concern for the neighbors is not so much that you have a camera or a light system or fence, it's that you're holding a lot of cash on your property, and it makes it attractive to a criminal element to access your property through theirs, is quite often what they're concerned about. And that's what I'm hearing from constituents. So, that's one of the reasons why we're here, and why we're looking, if we did not take any action in Lane County, it would have allowed almost all the uses in rural residential, and would have allowed no use in rural commercial or industrial. So, one of the things we're doing is actually opening up the usage in rural commercial and industrial. The second thing we're also talking about is asking OLCC to lift canopy restrictions in Lane County, you know, which I don't think has been very well talked about. So, it's not, you know, we are taking a pretty light hand. The real concern for us is the conflicts that arise in rural residential properties, and the size of the parcels, the usage there, no different than we're having a lot of conflicts right now with wedding venues. And the use of a home occupation permit to try and open a wedding venue in rural residential zones, and also even EFU and F1 zones, that are causing great conflict between neighbors. Now, you know, that's just, that's another way for a homeowner to make money on their property, but it creates conflict. And we're looking at reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions for wedding venues. I don't see, you know, this is a whole lot different, and that was a kind of new industry that sprung up over the last ten years that we're having to suddenly deal with, because it wasn't envisioned exactly that people would want to get married in a barn, or on a Christmas tree farm. You know, those sort of things weren't really envisioned, that that was an attractive thing. And dealing with those major events in rural settings is something we're going to have to deal with as a Board, land use-wise, just as we're going to have to deal with this.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, one of the things I heard in the testimony, and I thought this was actually the very first speaker, and that was Mr. Nelson, and I think he brought up something I think is critical to this whole area, issue, and especially from the testimony that came after that, from individuals who want to feel like that they want to have the opportunity to, in a sense, process. And that is, there is a significant lack of commercial-industrial space. And in fact, the reality is, I'm trying to think now, envision Eugene and Springfield twenty-thirty plan began six or seven years ago, and it still has not been co-adopted by the Laken County Board of Commissioners. Then it has to go up to Salem, by the way, and be processed through BLCD and be approved there, and which allows for expansion of urban growth boundary, which then, you could then have that opportunity to build more commercial-industrial lands, and especially the buildings. He's correct. I think at this point in time, anytime you have an opportunity where, okay, here's a building that could be used for this, it is really moving, and it's moving quickly. And I think that that's a piece that, so, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're left now to make decisions here, because our partners here in the cities aren't making decisions that they should be making, that could potentially be a real benefit to those who are in the business. That's from my perspective. So, this is why I think, you know, as we went through the work session, and as we've heard from the Planning Commission and the work they've done, I mean, this is why we end up having public hearings. This is the exact reason why, so we can hear from folks who are interested in moving this direction. At this point in time, I don't know if this is, if what we're considering today is a detriment today, a benefit today, these are the things I don't know. And so, but I will say, when you hear from the public, and what I heard today, I got to tell you, very reasonable people. That's how I'm going to view this, very reasonable individuals who came before the Board and really looking at this from a business perspective, and which is how we have to look at this, but we're still under, as Mark stated, and I think that was very important, I wanted the public to understand. Oregon is a, has high regulated, strict land use, a land use system. And so, we have decisions to make that, not only this, but then could potentially make our, whatever decisions come before with new industry and other industries that may come forward. So, I, you know, I look forward to my colleagues and the continuing conversation, but again, I can't thank the public enough for coming out. It, I think it opens all of our eyes, and gives us a chance just to hear about what's out there and what the potentials are. So, appreciate it. Thank you. By the way, I personally haven't used in thirty-five years, but that's beside the point.
Any further discussion or deliberations from the Board? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, as an additional rural residential, rural commissioner, I too have heard lots of different complaints from citizens, and mostly is just the, I guess, the manufacturing of the product. I don't know if it's necessarily the growing of the product, but the manufacturing time of the product has caused some problems with people that, you know, case in point, one, running a duplex, and one yard had a greenhouse with product grown in it, and they take the product into the garage and manufacture the product, and then it permeates both sides of the duplex. I think it is our job to put some restrictions on this to make sure that we're not impeding on other people's lives with allowing people to do that. I question, you know, I know that there's a lot of rural residential lots, RR lots, that are a quarter of an acre. I also know that there's a lot that are ten acres and twenty acres. I'm not too familiar with many more that are larger than that at this point, so I don't know about the six hundred acres that was represented, I'd have to dig in more to understand it. But today, we don't have time to adjust this ordinance and still be able to adopt it. But we could do, what was suggested was to put together a working group to survey how the product, how this is being implemented into the county, and consider some changes six months to a year from now, that might give us more time to determine whether or not it's appropriate to allow, just to be grown on five acres, twenty acres, one acre. At this point, I don't have the knowledge to be able to say that that's where I would draw the line. And so, it's easier, as Commissioner Bozovic said, for today to be able to implement it, to be able to say, okay, we're just going to exclude it today and make the commitment that, I'm willing to make the commitment that we can look at this at a deeper level with more time. We've made the suggestion to be able, which makes perfect sense to me, that if you're able to grow it on F2, to be able to process it on F2, because why would you want to grow it and then haul it someplace else when, you know, most other products seems to make sense to me, and we've made that adjustment in the code or this ordinance to be able to allow that. As far as setbacks, I can't tell you whether, you know, ten feet, thirty feet. I think that right now, we're being conservative and trying to make sure that we are respectful, and I think that those are other areas that could be looked at as we go down, and as was stated by a case-by-case basis. But we have to have some grounding or some foundation to make a case-by-case basis on, which we don't have at this point. You know, and the piece for me is, is that if you're legally doing it today, you're going to be able to continue to legally do it. We're not stopping your legal medical marijuana operation today. I think we have had probably some overambitious people that have got out in front of the laws and got out in front of the wave and done some things that maybe they should have been a little bit more prudent in their process, and allowed for the laws to be created before they decided to get out and make large investments. I feel sorry for that. I think what we've got before us today is a reasonable start, and I'm committed to, if the other members of the Board want to put together a group with our planning staff and review this six months or a year down the road and recommend some changes, I'm committed to doing that. But I don't know how we do it today and still be able to have a document that we can adopt and be able to have in place, because if we don't, then I guess there's not going to be any rules in Lane County if we don't adopt this today, come January first.
Commissioner Sorensen.
It seems like one of the issues always involving economic development is, who benefits from government action, and who is hurt by government action? And it'd be great if every day, government did nothing but benefit everyone, but unfortunately, even in this decision, if the Board moves to restrict growing of marijuana on rural residential, which it looks like that's where things are headed, then the people that own the smaller lots are going to be prohibited until the Board reverses that. They're going to be prohibited from getting in on this industry. But the people that are capable of buying bigger parcels of land, and I'm just going to make a broad generalization, people that are wealthier than the people that can buy smaller pieces of land, they're going to be able to, you know, move ahead and get a jump on the other ones. So, it seems like in making that decision, we'd want to say, well, gee, you know, what's the rationale for treating this product different? Well, as Mr. Russ pointed out, well, it's not legal in the federal government's eyes, it's just been made legal by Oregon voters, so that's the rationale to treat it differently. But I'm looking at it the way I think a lot of people are looking at it, as, well, we've already decided not to treat it differently. We've already, as a state, we've already decided that we want to take the illegality out of the criminal element that has been involved in growing and distributing. We want a better system, a fairer system, I think. I think it's, and we know that there are people that are still really mad about the decision that the state voters made, and they're still upset that this is going to be allowed, and it's going to be allowed with greater frequency. So, I just think we're better off with moving toward allowing it in the rural residential. In not doing that, if we don't do that, then we're going to have, we're going to have the problem of the big guys getting a jump on it. And then, future boards are going to say, gee, why is, why is the marijuana industry dominated by just a few big companies, when we had the potential in our state to do it differently?
No applause, please. It's time for the Board to be speaking, not for the audience. Further deliberations? Yeah, I will say that there are plenty of smaller farms in Lane County. There are plenty of small woodland owners that are EFU and F1 and F2 zoned, and they are small businessmen. I know quite a few of them. In fact, I had a meeting with one of them out in the Marcola area not too long ago, who currently grows medical marijuana on F1-zone land. So, I don't think the decision to limit rural residential is going to limit the ability for small business people to get into this business, not to mention there's all the lands available inside urban growth boundaries and city limits that we're not making any decisions around. We have to remember, one of the things that we are doing as a Board is following state land use law. Exception lands, which RR zone is for, are actually supposed to kind of be set aside and end up to be the first choice for urban expansion. And that's, you know, protecting those as purely residential lands is part of our tasking in the state land use goals. So, you know, we are at a point where we're being forced by the legislation to make a decision, and I agree with Commissioner Stewart, I'm more than willing to have a task force look at this and amend this in the future. We just don't have the luxury of time. The legislature set it up in a way that they, we have to pass something today in order for it to be effective. What we did look at was, you know, where are we seeing our conflicts and complaints with the existing industry? And the one place we were seeing the conflicts and complaints was rural residential properties. And having, you know, people holding multiple card, growing for multiple card owners in rural residential areas were creating conflict, whether it was odor, whether it was traffic, whether it was smoke generated from pot-bellied stoves heating greenhouses. It seemed to be something that we're seeing people complain about, have issues with, not be able to enjoy the use of their own properties, you know, where they're chased indoors all summer long due to odor issues. That's the conflicts we're having to deal with in way. And no different than we'll have to deal with those conflicts when it comes to wedding venues or any other land use decision you make. It's always about balancing people's rights to use their property as it's currently zoned. And this is a new zone coming in, and the intention of rural residential right now is primarily for residential use. And we're talking about bringing a business use in. Now, whether in the future it might be appropriate for us to look at a special exception for rural residential use, where we can look at size of parcels, setback, wind flow patterns, you know, what your neighbors are, if you're all completely surrounded by EFU, that might make some sense. But we don't have the ability or the luxury of time or the resources to go parcel by parcel, as was suggested by one person testifying, and decide which ones are appropriate parcels and which ones aren't. You know, we just don't have the ability to do that. Unfortunately, our land use department is self-funded. We don't subsidize them with general funds, so we can't ask them to do that kind of a task. But I'm more than willing to continue to look at this in the future. I do believe the county is taking steps to actually promote the industry by opening up rural commercial, rural industrial lands, which there are some, you know, large tracts of rural industrial land out there that are extremely underutilized. You only have to drive down one-twenty-six to Florence to see quite a few of those. So, there is land available out there. I don't think we're restricting the industry. In fact, one of the things we're looking for is even to raise canopy limits, you know, and, you know, if this was a normal crop, there wouldn't be a need for a canopy limit at the state level either. And that was actually written in the House Bill, you know, thirty-four hundred to direct OLCC to set a canopy limit. This is not a normal crop, you know, and I don't believe can be treated that way. So, I'm, I believe that the Board needs to move forward with the ordinance as we have published it for the first reading and adopted unamended, because that's the only way we can take action before January first, and we will look at, as soon as possible, setting up a task force to study future changes to our land use laws. And I apologize if it's an inconvenience. And I apologize if it's an inconvenience to somebody that took a gamble and either purchased property assuming they were going to be legal in that zone. That's just part of the, you know, if you're speculating on a business, you're speculating. And until the rules are final, they're not final. So I think we need to move forward with what we have, set up a task force, look at changes in the future. But we get one bite at the apple, according to House Bill 3400, and if we don't move forward today with an unamended ordinance, we can't move forward at all. The only thing we could do today is to withdraw language from the ordinance, and I don't think we can do that surgically well enough to not have unintended consequences to do so. Which is a change from last week, I'm going to support the processing in the F2 zone, which I wasn't two weeks ago. I didn't think it was necessary to add that in. But in light of a house burning to the ground right around the corner from me, that was processing, I'm a little concerned that we're going to add another potential fire source in forest land zones, but I'm okay with it for right now. Any further deliberations? Commissioner Far.
Mr. Russ, just a couple of questions for you. We're passing a fairly restrictive ordinance in terms of, I'm looking at the matrix on page, it's numbered page four of eight, which contains this kind of a summary of allowed and prohibited. So down the right-hand column, it says residential and all other base zones not listed in this table, and all six of the categories are prohibited in the residential. Look at forest zones F1 and F2, and there's a matrix down there, some are prohibited, some are allowed outright, and some are allowed with conditions. So if we pass a fairly restrictive ordinance, and we're doing it in large part, I understand, because of the time limit placed upon us by the timing that's happening with the state, it all has to be done by December 31st. Is that, that's correct? December 31st?
Correct. We want it in place for January 4th, right?
For January 4th. So then, in order to change these, to ease restrictions, can you just briefly describe the process that we'd go through to change the, let's say, the wholesale license in the rural residential? Let's take one of the points on the matrix. How do we go about changing it?
So it would be a similar process to what we've undertaken to develop these new regulations. And I agree that forming some kind of task force or work group to help inform that process makes sense. And then we would draft new language, we send notice to the state as we're required to do, we issue a written recommendation, hold a public hearing in front of our planning commission again, and then they make a recommendation to this body, to the Board of Commissioners, and then we hold another public hearing again in front of the board, and then you ultimately adopt those new regulations to make a change.
Okay. So the timing is based upon how quickly the special task force was set up and how fast the track it, things moved on? But not fast in any situation. I mean, it would take a while for any of the changes to take place, and there'd be a process in place. So if I were to talk to Cassie Heckenkamp, who testified that she purchased property and potentially was hoping to use it for marijuana processing, what I could tell Cassie would be that this restriction is being placed right now, but subsequent to this, through a process, the restriction could be changed with more public input, with a greater public process. That is, that'd be a truthful statement if I were to look at Miss Heckenkamp and say that.
I would say that sounds accurate.
And that in order to do it, we have to establish a process that would probably begin with a special task force. The special task force would be at the discretion of, depending on how we set up the task force, it could be the administrator who set up the task force, or it could be a board task force. But a force, a task force would be set up with a great deal of public input and weighing all sides of the, all sides of the argument as to whether or not a particular use could or should be changed. So the reason we're acting today, then, I'm truthful in saying to Miss Heckenkamp, the reason that we're acting today is because if we don't, we lose out on all opportunity to act, period. Because once the January 4 deadline hits, we are prohibited from changing any of the state rules that come into play at that point in time.
It definitely becomes more difficult to enact any time, place, and manner regulations after the fact, based on some other issues, Measure 49, that type of thing. It becomes more expensive to do it after the fact, based on Measure 56 notice requirements. So those are some of the considerations behind doing it ahead of time.
Okay.
And it definitely is easier to make the restrictions less onerous after the fact than try and make them more restrictive.
Easier, albeit potentially time-consuming. Okay, then let's talk about the F2 change a little bit. The F2 was changed a little bit from the first reading. Can you describe that a little bit?
So as you're aware, the commission added, proposed to add the language to allow processing as a use permitted with a special use permit in the F2 zone on the condition that there's a dwelling present on the property?
And we're able to do that today because that change was made at the first reading?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So I hope that's fairly clear to everybody who's listening, that more restrictive regulations that potentially are going to be passed, if what's not happened yet, are regulations that could be eased down the road through a public process, which would include a great deal of public input, and it would include a task force and a deliberative process to make the changes. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Any further deliberations? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of ordinance 15-08 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapters 10 and 16 to add provisions for regulation of recreational marijuana.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion to the motion. Commissioner Sorensen.
You know, I think a lot of people around the world are looking at the U.S. and saying, why is it taking so long to recognize what has been, I think, a failed policy in our country when dealing with marijuana? We've really come a long ways in Oregon, in Washington, and Colorado, and we've really tried to reduce the negative impacts of the criminal part of the public's demand for marijuana. And we, I think, in at least Colorado and Washington, Oregon, have been making some pretty good progress toward regulating medical marijuana, now legalizing the recreational marijuana. But efforts by local governments, and we see the map of Oregon, 200-something cities, and maybe a third of them are east of the Cascades, half of Oregon's counties east of the Cascades, and they have opted out of the taxation of marijuana, and they've opted out of the revenue. And they've done that as a protest against what the rest of the state's voters have done. So here we have an opportunity to let people develop this industry on rural parcels. And yes, we have an opportunity always to review legislation we pass and get task force decided who would be on it, who would appoint it, what would it study. And meanwhile, of course, we have the legislature possibly amending those rules, and so we have to wait until they do that. And we're looking at maybe one or two years to do all that. When in fact, what's really happening is the big guys are coming in. The big guys are seeing this as an expanding opportunity. And so we're going to leave out a lot of people by this vote today. And I hope that if the board's serious about following up on it, and that there will be additional money put into the Land Management Division budget, so we can have a task force and meetings, and people in the audience that are affected by this can be part of that, then we can do that. But as I recall, our budget from June of 2016, 15, we didn't appropriate any money, so we'll have to wait until the end of this budget year in roughly July of 2016 before that money can be appropriated and the work plan of the LMD can be amended, unless we're going to advance it and something that we've previously said we would do would fall off the list. So I see this idea of appointing a task force as being, you know, it's a way of saying, well, we're not making the decision forever, although today we're making the decision, and maybe down the road we'll change it. To me, we're going to have other medical marijuana and other recreational marijuana issues that come before us because of the changing picture at the legislature. And in my view, it's likely that we'll be waiting for that to happen rather than triggering this task force. But I don't make those decisions here, and I think that it is a decent fallback for the board if it's really going to continue looking at this and looking at the opportunities that people have elsewhere in Oregon to pursue marijuana farming as a legitimate business.
Commissioner Lyken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is, it's been, I think, pretty interesting for all of us up here, especially after Measure 91 was passed. From a personal level, I actually voted no against Measure 91. But from a practical standpoint, but I think as stated before, 60%, over 60% of Lane County voted yes, and I respect that. I respect it so much that if I felt like that we could come back for an emergency meeting in two weeks, hold a public hearing, and amend this, I would do it. The reality is, and I wanted Mark to share with you about the regulated land use system that we have, the reality is by law, we can't. We're going to have to wait. And that's the reason why we're here today. I personally, I will tell you right now, you've swayed me, I'm prepared to ask the board to put this task force together, and we do it quickly. And, because I think Commissioner Sorensen makes a point, the big guys will be coming in. There's no doubt in my mind. And, but as Business Oregon, as former Governor Kitzhauer, as Governor Brown have both stated, if we're going to grow our economy, we've got to grow our own. And like I said, from a personal level, I didn't vote for it. 60% of Lane County residents did, and if this means an economic opportunity for the citizens of Lane County, I will, I am prepared to support you as the best I possibly can. Unfortunately, by law, we cannot come back in two weeks, and I apologize for that. But I will say that I will strongly support putting together a task force where we can include folks who actually are in the industry, so we can continue to learn from you, we get this done quickly. So those of you who have made an investment, we can turn this around so that you'll have an opportunity to make some money and an opportunity for more economic growth. So if we were to vote no today, by the way, if this board voted no, that means Lane County opts out. So there's the challenge that we have. So I'm not prepared to vote no, because I think then that puts us in a pretty challenging position. I think we have no choice to vote yes, but then work with you, get this thing done. And I, again, this is why we have public hearings, and I want to thank all of you who came here and testified. You have turned my opinion around on this particular piece, especially dealing with rural residential. And I'm prepared to work with you and see if we can get this thing done. So thank you again, I thank you again for coming out and testifying, because we want to make sure your investment actually works well for you. And as somebody who came from a, my family's been residential development, actually before SB 100 was adopted. So my father was developing land before the land use system that we have and with the land use system that we have today. And so we've been around this a long time, and we want to grow our own. And that sounds kind of funny, but grow our own business. Anyway, so thank you again for testifying, but I think you, I hope you understand the issue we are. And by the way, when Commissioner Bozovic mentioned about being at where the state's asking us to get this done by the first part of January, this is why the emergency clause has been added. We really don't have any choice here. So I appreciate the testimony. Thank you.
Commissioner Far.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, when marijuana was made legal for recreational use in Oregon, I knew this was going to be an issue for the county, because there are a number of very serious concerns regarding a new formerly controlled substance becoming legal. And I immediately thought of three particular areas. I wanted to make certain that we didn't have an undue public safety issue, and I wanted to make certain that it wasn't going to get in the hands of minors, and I wanted to make certain that black market would be eliminated. And, you know, I, listening to the testimony today, once again, you all are very reasonable about it. Looking at Glenn Carpenter in the back there, I think I sold you your first table saw back in maybe 1979. That was a long time ago. You know, people in this room that I trust knows a opinion that I really trust. And like Commissioner Lyken, I believe that in order to move forward in a responsible fashion, we need to be yes on the motion today and very quickly and in very short order, begin to address the very specific issues that have been addressed by the folks who testified today. And you're not the only ones who have it on your mind right now, needless to say. You represent many, many times the number of people that are sitting in this room. And we have a responsibility to make certain that we step back once we have passed this ordinance today and take a look at the various parts of it and see what is reasonable to change and what is reasonable to make it more possible for the people who testified to use their property in ways that they would like to use their property. So I think addressing the safety issue, addressing not getting in the hands of minors, addressing eliminating the black market, I think moving forward with a more restrictive ordinance like this is probably the way we have to go today, and we'll back into making changes subsequent to this.
Do you have anything to say on the motion? So I'll jump in real quick. Some of you may know the way I got my start in politics was actually forming and chairing the Libertarian Party of Lane County. So I'm not a fan of prohibition. In fact, unlike Commissioner Lyken, I actually voted yes on Measure 91. So with that as a background, the one thing I do know, though, is as we make a product that is, has, you know, hallucinogenic properties, actually can be toxic to toddlers in concentrated forms, there needs to be some control over the distribution of that product, how it's taxed, everything else. Spent lots of time in Salem during the session trying to lobby for changes to House Bill 3400, and particularly in the distribution of the taxes. That all said, they handed us this one particular task, which was to do reasonable time, place, and manner, and they gave us a deadline to do it. And I think what we've come up with is, based on other people's liberties and property rights and concerns for their ability to enjoy their property, we thought we came up with a reasonable restriction, set of restrictions. What we're hearing from testimony that they don't, you know, that maybe we missed the boat, that there probably are rural residential properties that may be fitting to have this, and we might want to see about, you know, whether it becomes a special use, and then we see, you know, then it does get reviewed site by site. Of course, it's the applicant paying for the cost of the site-by-site review, not the county. And then, you know, whether there needs to be a change in the setback in EFU, all those things we can start looking at afterward, after this. We have one shot at this. And I will say, you know, some of the discussion I'm hearing about trying to be, you know, so unrestricted and promote the business and all that, is interesting coming from a commissioner that was willing to restrict what you could put in your stores, windows, coupons you could take, and everything else when it comes to tobacco industry, you know, and was willing to way regulate tobacco. You know, so it's kind of like, you either walk- You know, so it's kind of like you either walk the walk or you don't walk the walk relative to, you know, once you're an adult, you have a choice, and you can make those choices. And whether, how you wish to recreate, you know, how you wish to relax, that's in your own home, not behind the driver's wheel, I don't care. You know, and yes, I did inhale in college and even passed college for a little while. And I can't even tell you when the last time it was, but I think it was in the 80s, though. And as to the issue about the big guys taking over, alls I would like to do is, you know, walk you around Whittaker here, and we can go to Oakshire, you know, Falling Skies, Nkasi, and, you know, a few other breweries around there and talk about the impact Budweiser's had on them. There will be the Budweisers of the pot world. I'm expecting you all to be the Oakshires, the Nkasis, and the Class X's here, and you will have your niche, I'm sure. So I wouldn't be too worried about the big guys. You know, think about what their market share is doing right now, why they're talking about having to merge Budweiser, Miller, High Life. So I wish you the best. I apologize for inconvenienced, we're creating with this ordinance, but it's something we're kind of trapped into by the legislation that was passed in June. So I'll be supporting it at this time, but I am fully supportive of the task force idea. And I don't think that's just some nebulous promise, you know, we're making this in public to a lot of people. So it's pretty hard for us to back away from it. So with that, any further discussion of the motion?
Seeing and hearing none, this is an ordinance, so it's a roll, Carl. It's Milka Hyskey.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lichen?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Yes.
Commissioner Bozovich?
Aye. That's your chair.
Motion passes 4-1. Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. In January, it's my understanding that the Board approved asking land management staff to come back and give us an update on the long-range work plan. I'd like to, at this point, make a motion that when that item comes back to the Board, that there'll be information included that would explain a proposal on a task force that would look at the present time at rural residential recreational marijuana use and production, and with the intent to potentially make some recommendations to the Board on changes to that portion of the newly adopted ordinance.
I will second that. Mr. Sorenson?
One of the things that this idea of a task force brings up to me is that in many Oregon counties and cities, the discussion of marijuana has been since the passage of the state bail measure, has been all about the land use implications. Where should it be grown? Where should it be processed? Who has rights to object to it? And we haven't really promoted the idea that, you know, it's not just that Oregon's Tillam of Cheese is the best cheese, it's not just that the southern Lamont Valley wineries, oh, wait, northern Lamont Valley wineries, some Lamont Valley wineries are the best. We've put this in such a regulatory box, we haven't really thought about what the benefits might be to the state of Oregon and to Lane County, to a more effusive embracing of the policy that Oregon voters have voted. That it's not just about the recreational marijuana for Oregon residents, it's also the unique climate and unique opportunity we have in Oregon to do more with the resources that we have in our state. So I think that we ought to be thinking about this task force beyond the concept of a land use and more in the context of tourism, business, economic development, agriculture, people that have had something to do with the promotion of all these other things that we're spending lots of money to promote. And I just think this is an opportunity for us to turn this land use and regulatory kind of thing around and really go into the next phase of the implementation of this policy.
Mr. Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily disagree with what Commissioner Sorenson said, but I think to be responsive to the requests that were made today and to be focused on whether or not rural residential zoning should be included in growing and manufacturing of recreational marijuana, I think that that needs to be a specific task of a body and not necessarily talk about the all-encompassing global picture that the Commissioner recommended. So I'm not opposed to that, but what I'm proposing is really narrow in light of being timely. It could be something that could be processed fairly quickly in my eyes, and I'd like to see what that proposal might be. I would think that it would also include the process of maybe a home occupational business. You know, I don't want to direct you what to do, but I would hope that that would be included in January with a proposal. And I think we could come up with the resources. If this is economic, it might be something that the lottery dollars could fund if we have an economic component. So I'd leave that up to staff to on cost and how we might support it.
Mr. Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate Commissioner Sorenson's comments. I think that's important, but I think that our scope has to be, has to relate to the county. But the good news is, I think Mike had mentioned this when he came and testified earlier, and I don't know, I probably did a thousand crunches this morning, but anyway. Anyway, but we have a very good friend who is actually on the OLCC Board, and I think it's important that we, that I think as Lane County Board of Commissioners, we can continue to, he actually represents the 4th Congressional District of the OLCC, and we can continue to dialogue with him as well. And so, folks, you have folks in key positions that are right from here, including one of the OLCC Board members, that will be highly involved in this, and I got to tell you, you can't ask for a more pragmatic individual than Marvin, Marvin Mervoll, to be on, who's on the LCC Board. He's a very good pragmatic leader, and he will be very good for us to be working with as we go through this process. But our scope has to be pertaining to Lane County, but it doesn't obviously stop us from working with those individuals who are outside of Lane County to make sure that those of you who want to invest in this business, that we can be there to help you and move forward on this. So that's going to be key as you move forward. Anyway, appreciate it. Thank you.
So we've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So I think that's it on that item. We'll move to Item 15A on the agenda, which is County Council's Second Reading and Public Hearing on Ordinance 15-07 in the Matter of Amending Lane Code, Chapter 6, and Declaring an Emergency. And, Mr. Dingle here.
Good afternoon, Board and Chair Bozovich, yes. This is the second reading, and this is, just to refresh your recollection, this is to put into the Lane Code a definition of the person who is responsible and has authority over county property for purposes of trespass and exclusion. Just to clarify, I think there's a little confusion last time, this, our ordinance in Chapter 6 parallels--
Can you speak up? I can't hear you very well. There's a lot of noise back there, and you're not close enough to the microphone.
It's rare that someone says that I'm not talking. But to follow back up, so Chapter 6 of the code is designed to parallel for the county the criminal trespass statute, which is in the Oregon Revised Statutes, the Chapter 166. And there's a definition of person in charge, 166-205, and it basically says it's a person who has the legal authority to exclude people. Typically, when you're talking about private property, that's never an issue. I mean, the police officer comes up and it's your house or your property, and you say, I want this person gone, they can do that. It becomes somewhat problematic when you have a large corporation or you have a large governmental body because the obvious question becomes, you know, who in the 1,100 people has that authority? So this is, like I said, as part of the process, we're going through and amending, as I understand, the Board has asked for a number of years, trying to go through and update the code, the manual, and the APMs, put places, put things where they belong, and solve problems. And this is one of the problems that has come up in the past. That's why it was on the list, which is we are asked by folks, and I think Chair Bozovich, you gave a great example last week, which is when people say, who are you and where do you have the, where do you get off the authority closing this road or ordering this gate closed or whatever it is? And then what do you do when the person says no? So in your example, the person goes past it, and then inevitably, that may require our employee to go to someone in law enforcement and ask them to take some action, and then the person in law enforcement asks the question that I just posed, which is, who are you and where do you get the authority to do that? So this would clarify that in the code, and it would come from two places, either the Board or the county administrator.
So if I can ask real quick, can you repeat the ORS citing, you said this parallels?
Right. So the code, Lane Code, Chapter 6, and this portion of it is essentially our local criminal code. So this code that's being amended is the Criminal Trespass Code. So when you look at the Oregon Revised Statutes, and these have been in, this particular portion of the statute was adopted in, I think it was part of the 1972 Comprehensive Amendments, it's going through and it's providing definitions for purposes of criminal trespass and burglary. Criminal, burglary is simply a criminal trespass with a crime attached to it. And so, the Oregon Revised Statutes, of course, has to have the definition of who has the authority to exclude people. So at 164, 205, sub 5, it defines a person in charge as, a person in charge means a person, a representative, or an employee of the person who has lawful control of the premises by ownership, tenancy, official position, or other legal relationship. Person in charge includes, but is not limited to, the person or holder of a position designated as the person or position holder in charge by the governor, board, commission, or governing body of any political subdivision of the state. So what I tried to do essentially was simplify that language by simply saying for purpose, because we don't need the other part of it, and that, I think that last part can be a little confusing, was just to make it very clear that the person who has authority over county property is this Board, is the Board of Commissioners, or the county administrator, or who the county administrator delegates that authority to. And that was, quite frankly, on my part, a practical part. He may decide not to delegate it to anyone, or you could, you know, I mean, the Board could amend this and say that it was yours. I just don't think, as I mentioned last time, it's a very workable situation when you think about the one that, for example, Commissioner Bozovich described, the last time we had a hearing on this, it's not practical to convene the Board at 8:00 on Wednesday night and ask them if, you know, to delegate to someone at Public Works the authority to exclude someone from a road or off a bridge or whatever the piece of public property is.
Mr. Stewart?
And if I might add to make sure that I'm on the same page here, Mr. Dingle, when we, we had an incident with, in regards to the Forest Work Camp this last summer, when we had a fire that broke out, we had frantic telephone calls to different Board members, emails, texts. I received texts to give, somebody to give permission so that the Department of Forestry could actually use that facility. So here we are in a real-time situation on, I believe, a Thursday or a Friday, the fire breaks out, and people are trying to find--
Friday evening at 5:00.
When was it?
Friday evening at 5:00. Yellow fire.
There you go. So we needed somebody, we couldn't call a meeting, and if, it was clearly pointed out, and it was through our training that we took on emergency management situations this last summer, that this was one area that we really needed to be able to point, somebody has somebody who had authority to make those decisions so that we didn't have to take the 24 hours to call a meeting and hopefully be able to get three Commissioners to show up to give directions in an emergency situation. So am I correct? This is what really, because I believe we gave guidance through, as a result of our training, emergency training, and the specific instance, to be able to have this clarified so that we could make those appointments and, you know, give that authority to the administrator or subsequent people for different situations. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, and that's actually a good way to look at it, which is flipping it around the other way. We're tempted to look at it, the exclusion, it's also the granting, and that was the other reason that I included it, wrote it the way I did, because you've already granted, in that limited circumstance, extensive powers to the county administrator to grant the use of property and expend resources. So it seemed that that was a parallel. It made sense, quite frankly. And you're right, I mean, someone could come up and say that the person, it didn't happen, but without clarity, someone could have come up in that circumstance with the forest camp and argued that the state was trespassing, and come back and ask if they'd be cited for trespassing. Because if someone went and said, who authorized the use of this forest? Who is the person in charge that authorized them to be there? Because that's the other side of being authorized to exclude means authorized to use. That's why you have, they're opposite sides of the same coin. That's why you go to that person.
Oh, and just to go a little further, is my understanding that it was the state that was really hesitant to even step foot on that piece of property without having the proper approval. So it wasn't necessarily that somebody was waiting in the wings to challenge who gave authority, it was the fact that state had policy that they wouldn't, they needed somebody to give actual approval to use that piece of property before, and it was a little bit unclear. I mean, they're calling the, Commissioner Farr, the Board Chair at the time, and other Board members, administrator, so.
Well, as I said, we've operated off of sort of this as an inherent authority, or that it's been essentially the practice for a period of time. The problem becomes when someone like the state or some law enforcement agency asks the question, you are X, where is, you want me to do, you want me to do this particular thing, where is your authority to do that? And it wasn't there. I mean, you couldn't, you could say, well, we've always done this, or it's always been the practice, or everybody knows the county administrator can do that, but sometimes that doesn't work, and it certainly doesn't work with formal agreements like the one you're talking about when it comes to the state. You know, that, I think, was a situation where practical circumstances just kind of moved the issue to the side. But it did raise the issue. It did raise the issue. And that's the issue, that's the context that it's come up in, in other, what I would say, less than non-emergency situations, but where there are forms and notices that people have been asked to sign, and then the person says, well, if you, if you're, you know, there's a box that says you're the person, just like a private party, when someone wants to have someone arrested for trespass, they have to be willing to check and sign a box that it's there, that they are the person that has authority over that property. They're either the owner, they have some other legal basis to exclude someone or control it.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks very much. I was curious about a couple of aspects. First is, in the background part of the memo, there's no real mention of the active shooter training and this being part of the follow-up to that. Is that, is that accurate, that it's not a follow-up to the active shooter training that we went through?
Are you talking about the emergency preparedness thing that we did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that it's a specific follow-up to that. It is, that is just another circumstance that brought forward that issue when it came down to who has control over county property.
Okay.
Same issues that we addressed during those ordinances.
Is it related to the problem at the Forest Work Camp?
I'm not saying it was drafted in specific in response to that, but that is an example of where it would--
Okay. What about the protests on the Wayne Morse Free Speech Plaza, where the county administrator went out to the assembled group and said, you know, this area is closed now, get out of here?
And that was, that was an example of where that was, that specific issue was raised, the first time.
Okay.
Because then, I mean, by the time, the second time rolled around, there was just no question, if the Board doesn't have that authority, then no one does. And you'll recall that the second time, there was no issue about that because the Board acted.
The language itself says the Board of Commissioners. It says, as used in this section, duly authorized officer includes but is not limited to the Lane County Board of Commissioners. Now-- Now, what I didn't understand about that sentence was, or that part of the sentence is, for the duly authorized officer, the Lane County Board of Commissioners, to do something, they have to meet.
Correct.
So, how is having the board giving notice of its meeting, 24 hours' notice, or 48 hours' notice, or one week's notice, how is that helping to resolve these issues where a decision needs to be made now, when you've said, well, the duly authorized officer includes the Lane County Board of Commissioners? Then you have to have, then we're back into the same problem we had when, when the state wanted to find out if they could use the Forest Work Camp. The commissioners that got the call said, well, you know, under this new ordinance we have, I know the Lane County Board of Commissioners is an authorized, is an authorized officer, so we'll be able to answer your questions, state forestry people, as soon as we get the board together and have a meeting.
No, actually, that's why it was written the way it was, Commissioner, because what that, what this, the way this is written, is that, let's take, let's take the Forest Work Camp example. Mr. Mokraheyski, under this ordinance, would have the authority to allow the state to use it. The board is unhappy. The board meets and overrules him. The situation is, you know, what he does, whatever he does for three days, the board comes back and says, no, we don't want the state to use it. We're voting to get them out. They have 24 hours to leave. It's designed, because we, because it was designed with a recognition in mind that there are two kinds of situations. There may, for example, there may be a situation involving the potential closure, or required closure of something that's down the road, that the board, because there's adequate time, can act. But obviously, in some of these other circumstances, there isn't time for the board to act, but, but ultimately, this board control, the ultimate, ultimate, sort of final authority is the board. And so if you are unhappy with something that the administrator has done, you simply would overrule that decision. He would grant the temporary permission, in that case, the Forest Service could not be trespassing.
I think you're just basically arguing it's good to include the Lane County Administrator in that, in that sentence. My problem wasn't with that. My problem was with including the Board of Commissioners as the group that decides that is itself a duly authorized officer. Because you still have the problem of having to convene the board to have this duly authorized officer make a decision.
No, no. No, no. If you're reading that way, you're reading it incorrectly. What it's saying is that the board, as I said, I'll try another example, there's some processes under consideration. This board could meet, regular meeting, emergency meetings, special meeting, whatever you want to call it, and convene and make a decision about this. The board does not have to meet under this statute to grant him the authority to act. He can act. It is the other way around, though, because you're at the top of the, of the legal pyramid. You could over, subsequently overrule his decision.
What about, what about, let's say, rather than at the top of the organization, the Board of Commissioners, the county minister, what about a decision by a county employee who is sitting at their cubicle, or their desk, or at their customer service counter, and they've got a member of the public that has just, you know, made so many statements that that employee doesn't want to hear at that particular time of day, and they feel like they've done their job as a county employee, and they've done a good job, but this, this person is just not leaving them alone. And they're, maybe it's at the land use counter, maybe it's at the tax counter, maybe it's at the public health building, and they don't like the service they've been given, or they don't like the fact that the person that's, that's, that they're dealing with says they don't have the authority to change a county ordinance, or a state law, or federal law, and they have to do it this way, and if you don't like it, you're going to have to leave. Now, at that point, and we're not talking about it at some sort of big policy level of lawyers, and commissioners, and county administrators, we're talking about employees who decide that they want that person gone. That person is now gone beyond what might be considered normal government constituent interaction, and now that person's decided, as I understand it, this delegation of authority need not be in writing. So, do, does that person have that authority?
No, not unless Mr. Mokraheyski's delegated it to him, or you have.
Okay.
So what, that's actually a very, that's actually a good example, Commissioner. So, you have someone who is, whose behavior is not criminal. There's, let's just say they're standing there using racial slurs and up attacks, and they won't move, won't get out of the way. And the individual employee is a great example. The individual employee becomes concerned, other citizens can't get the service, so they call, they summon someone, and they say, this person is standing here, you can hear them, they're using racial up attacks, they're, they're blocking other people from receiving the service, I want them removed, ask them, I've asked them to step aside, they've screamed for fanatics and racial up attacks at me. Depending on the law enforcement service you call, they go, who are you? Well, I'm the chief teller at Assessment and Taxation. That's very good. Show me where you have the authority to do this. The way this would work now, is that that person would contact Mr. Mokraheyski. And Mr. Mokraheyski would describe, this is, you know, would be in the circumstance where it would be fluid. He would listen to the description, and he would say, either delegate the authority to the employee, but probably more likely, he would go, he would tell the officer themselves, I'm the person in charge, I hereby grant you the authority, or indicate I want this person removed based on what I've heard. So it's, it just means that if Mr. Mokraheyski calls down and tells the, you know, if the employee calls to report that complaint, and he speaks with them on the telephone, and says, based on what you've told me, I hereby delegate authority to you to, to ask the police to remove that person, it just doesn't have to be in writing.
Is there any procedural due process problem in not giving the, the person that's, that's doing this behavior in, that's, that's it, you're kicked out of a county building, you're kicked out of a county public meeting, you're kicked out of a public square like the Free Speech Plaza, because I have authority to kick you out? Is there, is there a problem with the, not having any due process rights to say, well, that's actually not what happened?
You could build in a process where you gave the person a trial, a hearing in front of the board?
What I'm saying is, the way it's written is, the Board of Commissioners, the county administrator, or any person, including private security, including private security delegated to do this, and it need not be in writing. So I'm saying is, it's a pretty broad grant of power to anybody that steps forward and says, hey, I'm in charge here, and I've been given this authority.
I mean, yes, can, can we have an employee that lies to the police? Absolutely. Can't start that.
We're trying to build something that protects the safety of the employees, that protects their ability to do their job, but we're also trying to protect the rights of people who are trying to express themselves to government in a way that not everybody thinks is polite.
And I don't know what to tell you, Commissioner. I mean, if you want it, you could say that you can retain the authority yourself, and then, before anyone's-
Why don't we give it just to the county administrator? Because we do trust the county administrator. Not to any person, but to the county administrator.
You could, you can do that.
And why would the board even have this authority? Why wouldn't we, through this ordinance, give the authority to the county administrator?
You could do that. I thought, I quite frankly, thought the board would want the flexibility to, being the elected representative body, would like to retain the authority to ultimately have a final order.
We could always revoke that authority.
Right, I mean, one of the-
That's different than saying, we're going to actually make a case-by-case determination.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, it really does boil down to whether, who you trust, because the other thing is, you've got to remember, as diligent as Mr. Mokraheyski is, Mr. Mokraheyski isn't here 365 days a year. I suspect that, I suspect that one of the things that Mr. Mokraheyski would do under this ordinance, and one of the reasons that I wrote it that way was to grant him the delegation of that authority, would be that if Mr. Mokraheyski's going to leave the state for two weeks on vacation, he would delegate an individual to be that, to be him in that, in that absence.
Is there a reason that's not developed in the ordinance where we say, the county administrator or his written delegate? So that, and this has been a good policy, I think, follow-up to our, our emergency preparedness workshop, is, let's get that in place, where the county administrator does do that. And I know, as a practical matter, he's been trying to do that for at least the last eight or nine months, to have a written delegation. It's going to be the, the director of operations, I'll be gone for five days, I'll be at a conference, I'm delegating this, and that way, everybody in the organization knows that that authority is there.
You could do that. It actually already says that the county administrator has the authority to delegate this. It just says it doesn't have to be in writing. And again, that was a practical consideration, where if there was, if there were situ, and that could change. And so that's, that's why I did that. I mean, he certainly could, Mr. Mokraheyski might decide that he's only going to put it in writing. You know, that he would only do his delegations in writing.
I hesitate to use this phrase, but I'm going to, in optimism. This is my last question for now. Is there any way to, to build into this delegation, or this authority, the protection of the rights of the public to protest against the government in the form of people that work in our building, people that work for the government, and people who have a right to lawfully protest the actions of government? Is there a way to reconcile that duty that government officials have with the ongoing sort of practical aspects of trying to help the public get what it needs out of government?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. It's just like the criminal trespass statute. If you look at 6.025, sub four, the other element of this is, of the criminal trespass is that the person is there without a lawful purpose. And as you've outlined, a person, that's why, that's why it doesn't exist, that's why there's no due process in the criminal trespass statute, because if you, if you were to, if the person in charge has somebody arrested who's engaged in a lawful activity, they're going to, A, have an affirmative defense to the charge, and as you so correctly pointed out, they probably also have a civil claim against the person who ordered their arrest. So we do presume that our employees are supposed to know what the law is. And that's, again, I think that you have to have a certain amount of faith and trust in the employees and in your administrator, because that's why, for example, I assume that if Mr. Mokraheyski had any questions about, or his designee had any questions about the appropriateness or the reason for the person's removal, that they would be consulting with legal counsel. So try, what this ordinance is really designed to do is the same thing that the criminal trespass statute does, which is try to strike that balance between, you know, sort of the optimal of what you'd like to have in terms of the board making every single decision, and the practical realities of the way we have to run our organization.
So, I have a couple of questions before we get to the public hearing, because I just want to make this a little bit clear. Our county code and ordinances and manual, they're, they can't override state or federal law, can they?
No.
So, First Amendment protections, you know, rights of assembly, they're in the Oregon Bill, the Bill of Rights, and, you know, Article, Article One of the, of the Oregon Constitution. None of that stuff gets waived by us adopting the ability of delegating the authority for trespass to somebody, that that person exercising something under county code still is under the jurisdiction of the US and state constitution, and state statutes and the US code.
Yes, absolutely. I just want to make that clear.
That's lawful purpose. There's, there's, nothing we're doing today is waiving any of that, any of that civil rights.
It does not have that authority.
Yeah. Second, do we give training to our managers and supervisors, which they are supposed to pass on to all set employees, about the laws of the state, particularly relative to things like harassment, civil rights protection, protected classes, everything? Do we do that in this county?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
I just want to make sure those two things are perfectly clear before we move on. Secondary to that, I don't have any issues with us being included as, as the delegated authority for closing public access to public property, because I could foresee that as simple as we're entering into an extreme fire, red flag fire hazard, and we choose to close county parks by board order.
That's a good, that's another, that's actually another good example, and that would be one where you would have-
Where we had the time, saw it coming, and we made it, and it was the board that took the action to make the closure. Now, I don't expect the board to get called in the middle of the day, because somebody's mauling off down at Assessment and Taxation, and asked to convene a board meeting to trespass that person. You know? That's not what this, this says, and it's not what it's asking the board to do, but if we don't include the board in the delegation of authority, that may make it difficult for us to actually take affirmative action as a board in a board order to close public property, whether it's a park, whether it's a road that we're going to close for maintenance, whether it's a boat ramp, you know, you name it, there's things that we, that are our public property, that we occasionally close as board order, for legitimate reasons that don't violate the Oregon Constitution, the US Constitution, or any of the laws thereof.
Yeah, and that, and that, actually, that's a good example, too. Let's say that you did close a boat ramp or something, and it was in another jurisdiction, and someone basically said, to heck with you, I'm going to continue to use this boat ramp, and so, and one of our, let's say it's one of our parks, parks employees, they call, pick up the phone, and they call, and it's another law enforcement agency, state police, and say, this person, this, this, this person's not supposed to be here. Well, who are you, and what authority do you have to do? Because you might, I could see, I can imagine a situation where this board might delegate authority to an employee based on some contingencies in the future. In other words, you, you know, we as a board agree that if X circumstance reaches this point in the future, then you should do whatever, close the boat ramps, or close the parks, or do whatever.
And I guess, one last follow-up. Our delegation of authority to Mr. Mokraheyski, and his further delegation of that authority, in any of that, do we waive the, the responsibility of whoever's exercising that authority to obey state and federal law?
No, no, the person who's, the person who ultimately exercises the authority is always responsible. Now, what it may mean, and this is, again, when, when I talk to people about, we talk about the training, Mr. Mokraheyski is going to, you know, he has every incentive to be careful about how he does that, because he is, he will be also responsible to, for the actions of the person he delegates that authority to. Just like this board would be responsible for the, delegating the authority to the administrator. That's the way it works.
Yep. All right. Thank you, I just want to make that clear. Are there any further questions for staff before I open the public hearing? And I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance 15-07, and I have two people signed up. The first person is Mike McFadden.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike McFadden from Eugene. And I think everyone who's reasonable completely understands that there are a myriad of reasons why the representatives of a governmental body would need the authority to do, to have a person removed for various reasons. But, you know, I just have some concerns and some cautions, and so, I'm mainly just going to be speaking to Administrator Mokraheyski, because it seems like he's the primary person to whom this delegated authority will be used by, or further delegated onto, so like. But the thing I have to say is that I don't want to live under any kind of government where we have to rely on the people in that government to be good people. Okay? So, fortunately, we have Administrator Mokraheyski, and he's a good person, and I do trust you, and I think a lot of people do, too. But your predecessor wasn't trustworthy, and who knows who, who may replace you in the future, and what their motivations may be. So, looking at the language that counsel has drafted, I do have concerns, because, you know, it's just really broad, and I think that when we extend power to people, you know, they're human beings, and power tempts them to abuse it. And I don't know who is going to be tempted and who isn't to abuse the power, but I just don't want to have to keep my fingers crossed that the people who we've delegated authority to are going to be respectful of that authority. And, I mean, with all due respect to the, to the Constitution, and how it protects us, and all that, it's not like there's a magic seal that follows us around with all these rights, that we're just protected, everyone. But if our rights become violated, we have to go through a whole string of legal proceedings to try to get redressed for any of that. So, it's a long process, and it's not affordable for everyone, and so there's disparities there, where if a government body or a government employee took adverse action against someone that wasn't fair, the person they were taking that action against may not have the ability or the resources necessary to, like, get justice for themselves. So I want you to consider that. And then also, I just had a question listening to the exchange. So if, in one of these hypotheticals, let's say it was me, because I'm outspoken, and I've come to walk through the public service building on a way to some destination I have, and I'm standing looking at the pictures, because I have 15 minutes, so then I'd be loitering around in the building in the hallways, looking at the pictures. And let's say Mr. Dingle's been extended the authority by Mr. Mokrheyski, and he sees me in the hallway, and he comes over, and he's like, "Well, what are you doing here?" Well, what if I tell him to send me your business, and I don't want to talk to you? Or what if I tell him that, you know, I really don't appreciate what he's done to the citizens of Dexter, and he doesn't like that answer from me, and he wants to, you know, ask me to leave? I think that his fondness for severability clauses shows that he expects a lot of his legalese to be challenged in the courts over time. And, you know, I don't think Mr. Dingle's a trustworthy person. So a lot of people end up butchering the Benjamin Franklin quote, so I decided to end with one by Dwight D. Eisenhower, and I think it's relevant to the direction this country's headed. And it says that if all Americans want a security, they can go to prison. They'll have enough to eat, a bed, and a roof over their heads. But if an American wants to preserve their dignity and equality as a human being, they must not bather next to any dictatorial government. And you heard me this morning speak about how I think that there's a trend within certain among bureaucrats or bureaucracy to be autocratic, be authoritarian, and to use laws like Lego building bricks. I mean, everything that Hitler did was passed legally by the so-called elected representatives of the German people at that time. So, I mean, yes, what you're delegating this authority could be used for the most sane, logical purposes, but it also has the temptation to people who would use it for the wrong reasons, and I just want everyone to consider that. And Mr. Mokrheyski, please, please be very careful to whom you delegate this authority. Please keep it in writing. And one thing I want to know is if you delegate authority to someone to have a specific person removed, does that person just automatically walk around retaining authority to have people, ask people to leave whomever they want? I mean, there's legitimate questions, like, how long does the authority that's been delegated last? Does it have terms attached to it, or is it just like a carte blanche authority? These are questions that we deserve to know the answers to. So thank you.
Sir Brian Michaels.
Miss, of course, is an issue with which four of the commissioners and county council and I have in the past been in disagreement when it comes to the exercise or the belief of an exercise of First Amendment rights on county property. I thought there was a violation. You five did not. This particular ordinance raises many of the same issues, but it's far more extreme in its violation of the First Amendment. This particular ordinance came to my attention recently, and I mean the whole ordinance, not just the portion that's being considered to be added or amended. And I think if you read it, and if one reads it, one reads Number Four, which says, "It shall be presumed that a person is acting without a lawful purpose." The presumption of innocence is something I think we all know and have learned in second grade. Now, this ordinance is presuming somebody is guilty. And what are the factors that make one presumed to be guilty? Because when a government is exercising its authority over people, it has to have standards. It has to have a reason to say what. So if you look at Two and Three, they make a stab at what the standard is to find somebody this way. Number Four, if you look at Section B, it may on any part of county property, streets, parks, public building, and be asked, "What are you doing here?" If they don't like the answer, you can be told to leave or get arrested. Your speech, your presence, your very being is suddenly presumed to be guilty, just because somebody asked you a question, they didn't like the answer. But it goes even farther than that, because it doesn't have the conjunctive "and," it has the other conjunctive "or" that follows that particular element of presumption of guilty. Or, or refuses to leave said building or premises. What does that mean? That means that a government person can tell somebody to leave for no reason whatsoever, and they are presumed guilty if they do not leave. That's pretty darn dangerous. And you think, "Well, government officials do the right thing all the time." Well, let me tell you a little story. As you know, I represented the folks who were out on the Free Speech Plaza in that homeless situation, that tribe of us, tribe of you disagree with. But prior to that, I also represented a woman who was involved in that movement called Ally Valkyrie, which many of you may remember. Ally Valkyrie asked me to represent her when she was told to never come into the county building again, or she will be arrested. I represented her against the person who told her that, Mr. Dingle. I have those emails with Mr. Dingle and myself. These reasons were not provided, other than he didn't like her speech, he didn't like her activity, he didn't like her outspokenness. To his credit, he did not have her arrested, or as far as I know, no one was willing to arrest her. I have the emails. Mr. Dingle has the emails, between he and I, on this very subject. And if you ask him, he will have to tell you, "He ordered Ally Valkyrie not to come into this building, or she will be arrested." You ask him now. That's the power you're handing off to people. My presence here today isn't only about the duly authorized offer amendment to this ordinance that is what is actually being considered. But like I say, the entire ordinance came to my attention, my personal attention, based on the fact that you were considering this duly authorized officer pardon. And I read it. And I think, before you move any further, you need to really consider whether or not Section Four is something you want to be proud of. Whether you want somebody like Mr. Dingle to do what he did and say, "I don't like what maybe you'll do it to me," given what I'm saying right here now. He probably won't, because PR would be bad news. You'd fault him for all of that, and it'd make bad press. But that's just because I can get, I'm an attorney, so I can get some of that attention. Ally Valkyrie's just a woman who's outspoken. Michael McFadden's just a guy who's outspoken. They don't reach the attention of everybody. So first, I would say, get rid of Section Four. Have some standard. Mr. Dingle talked about training. Well, what good is training when there is no standard, when you have a presumption of guilt in the ordinance itself? Second, a duly authorized person. Well, I'm assuming that the county administrator or your body, and by the way, if you read the Section Six, it says, "Duly authorized officer includes, but is not limited to." Now, I have no idea what that means. I do, as a legal reader of statutes and legal writer of legal briefs, included but not limited to, have an expansive view. But in this context, what could that possibly mean? You'd want it to be strict. You'd want it to be specific. Who can delegate? One says, "Well, these people can delegate it, not limited to these people." Well, then who else? It doesn't really say. And I'm assuming also that once someone is delegated, that person can be delegated to delegate other people. So if Mr. Dingle is delegated, he can be delegated to delegate other people. And suddenly, you have people in parks, on streets, being asked, "What are you doing here?" If they don't like their answer, they don't like their looks, they don't like the fact that they maybe voted against somebody, Mr. Dingle wanted them to vote for, and he knows it? Well, that's the end of it. Or, doesn't even have to ask them anything. You just tell them, "Get out of here. Then you're presumed guilty." That brings us back to Section Four. But if you fix Section Four, then you need to put in some kind of standards that are written in when these delegated persons are charged with the task of telling a person to leave public property. Because all First Amendment jurisprudence in this country stems from the long-held tradition that public streets and public parks are the most sacred-held First Amendment avenues in America. And when you're giving the authority of someone to trespass them off of public property, you're essentially telling them, "You have to leave your property." When a private party does it, they have signs, "We reserve the right to refuse service to anyone." You've seen them. You can't put that on a public park. That's what the statute does. Essentially, it puts it on a public park, "We reserve the right to refuse your entry into your park. We reserve the right to refuse your entry into your county building." I know we've disagreed in the past, and I know sometimes, you know, those kinds of things can bring certain personality problems amongst people and all of that. But I ask you to look past what you may have thought about our disagreement, and just look at this ordinance and the way I'm trying to express it to you, and see that it's very, very different. I mean, Ronald Reagan, who I've agreed with on a lot of things, believe it or not, once said, "Reasonable people can disagree on a host of issues." And I think that's true. I think disagreement does not lead to disrespect. I've always thought that. And that's how I see our past differences. This is a little over the top. I hope you really consider that. Unfortunately, I am extraordinarily late for someone waiting for me in my office. And so I will not be here, and I don't want you to take that as an offense that I didn't stay around to hear what you had to say. But I'm already late, and I had that obligation. I didn't think it would go this long. I'm happy to send you the emails I had with Mr. Dingle and Ms. Valkyrie. If you want to see for yourself, I will do that. And when I'm gone, you can ask them about it and see where the motivation may come from, because maybe he didn't have the delegated authority he wants in this ordinance to have kicked her out because of her public outspokenness. And maybe that's the source, the motivation for this. Something's bothering you. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you. And I will remind you, we record our board meetings, and you can watch online our response later tonight after you're finished with your appointment.
Thanks very much.
I was working on mine the other day, so update your software.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I can address a couple of the issues that were raised.
Before we get there, I need to ask if there's anyone else that wishes to testify. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
So with regard to the question that was raised by Mr. Michaels, the reason it says including but not limited to is that the board may choose, depending on the circumstance, to delegate authority to another specific employee based on the circumstance. So, for example, it may be that whatever the circumstance is involves a specific department like Health and Human Services or Public Works or whatever it is, and it would make little or no sense to have Mr. Mokrheyski be the person who is responsible for carrying out whatever the board's authority was. With regard to the situation with Ms. Valkyrie, I think the one part that Mr. Michaels is forgetting is, I believe that situation, as I recall it, is that she was charged with, she'd been charged with some sort of crime, and one of the conditions of her release agreement involved no contact with the victim. And I believe that the county was the victim. So that was what that -- and in my recollection, that is, is that there was actually an arrangement made out where she could come for Eugene. The back and forth he's talking about was providing access, because the city had just moved to Eugene, and that was the direction that I was being given by the administrator as the representative of, quote, "the victim, the county," and that.
And I will recall that while that order was in place, we did allow her to come and address board meetings. We did not trespass her from board meetings. So she maintained her right of redress to us while under that order.
That's my recollection.
You know, one of the things, if Brian's going to watch tonight, I just want to read Section Three of ORS 164-205, which is the matching to our Section Four, which is describing what it means to enter or remain unlawfully means. They don't have the words "is presumed" or anything in there. They just say it means to enter or remain in or upon a premises when the premises, at the time of such entry or remaining, are not open to the public, or when the entrance is not otherwise licensed or privileged to do so; to fail to leave premises that are open to the public after being lawfully directed to do so by a person in charge. You know, the exact, almost the exact same language we have in our statute is in state statute and has been there since the early '70s. And I don't think the state has had a major issue with employees that are delegated as persons in charge violating people's First Amendment rights or rights of assembly with that charge, under that language. You know, one of the things that's always the balancing fact is, you know, are they there for lawful purpose? And that's, you know, I don't think people just get to decide because they don't like when questioned, "Why are you here?", they don't like the response that that's good enough to trespass somebody. We still have to weigh that against being sued in the future, and it doesn't take a whole lot of wherewithal for somebody to make that suit. And you don't have to actually get to court to even get that satisfied complaint to the elected officials sometimes, or resolve an issue where someone's trespassed, and trespassed, or it could be lifted, or, you know. It's not like the only path to resolving a trespass is to go all the way through court.
Actually, that's kind of interesting that you mention that, because that's exactly what happened. In my recollection, that was the issue that Ms. Valkyrie was working through that process, which is how do we, how do you balance between whatever the restrictions are that are part of the release agreement and the court order there versus the other thing, you know, having access to a public building.
And we chose, as a board, to allow her access to the boardroom at that time. So any other questions or staff or other deliberations? I will entertain a motion. Quick, everybody go back to their thing so they can read correctly.
Mr. Stewart? Let's jump ahead. It took me a while to get from one item to the next. I would move approval of Ordinance 15-07 on the matter of amending Link Code Chapter Six and declaring an emergency.
Second? It moved in seconded. Discussion to the motion. Sorenson.
Mr. Dingle, part of the ordinary process of enacting ordinances is whether or not we're going to have an emergency clause or not. And in the last item, we discussed, we put the emergency clause on it because there's a state statutory deadline. What's the rationale for the emergency clause?
So that it can take effect immediately, so that if there's a situation that requires Mr. Mokrheyski to do something, that we don't have a 30-day gap.
But doesn't that deprive the public of evaluating the ordinance and exercising their rights? And we deprive the public of that right in the other instance because of the state deadline. What's the rationale for taking that right away from the public?
Just the practical, day-to-day business. The board could decide not to do that. And then we'd just be in the, we'd be in the same position we are today, which is we'd be waiting 30, you know, we'd have to wait 30 days when someone asks that, if they were unwilling to accept Mr. Mokrheyski's representation, and my assurance that he had that authority.
Right. But, I mean, this is, in a certain sense, we can negate the public's right under Oregon's Constitution to seek a review of this and have a vote of the people if we didn't put that on there. In other words...
I'm not understanding.
Okay. We don't have, we have the right, as a board, to either enact ordinances with or without emergency clauses.
Right.
And we don't normally put emergency clauses in ordinances unless there's some other big reason why not. Now, big reason is subject to argument. But big reason usually is, well, there's some other deadline that is forcing us to do that, such as in the marijuana vote. do that, such as in the marijuana vote. I had not, I had not heard a rationale for why, since the ordinances that this is amending probably were enacted without an emergency clause, why we would start putting that on specifically.
But...
And no one raised this in the public hearing. So it's not, you know, obviously that big of a deal, no one raised it. But on the other hand, part of why we are up here is to watch for these constitutional rights, and it is a right of the public to seek review. And usually, they don't. Ninety-nine times out of 100, they don't, but occasionally, they do.
The board could choose not to do that, absolutely.
Very good.
So I think the only reason why we might want an emergency clause on this is currently we are at risk of somebody challenging the authority of the administrator to trespass somebody from public property. You know, we currently don't have clear delegation of authority, and it may be an issue in the operations county. Now, what are the risks of that being an issue in 30 days? I'm not quite so sure. If, you know, Mr. Sorenson, Commissioner Sorenson, you want to amend the ordinance to remove the emergency clause, I don't think that needs another reading to do so because it's pulling language from rather than adding to. So, you know, it put us at risk for an additional 30 days of having that issue come up, or having to call an emergency meeting in the board to delegate that authority on its notice, but...
I think that, well, at least one of the things that occurred to me was, you know, in talking with, because I'm renewing these, we're coming back with the emergency, the annual review, the emergency preparedness ordinances and whatnot. And, you know, we are going, I just happened to coincidentally notice today that they're predicting potential flooding next week, and I know the board's going to be down for a while. And, you know, it's, as I sit here, I think this is one of those sort of perfect storms, if you will, no pun intended, that, you know, you could be, the board could be sort of scattered and not meeting, and then there could be one of these situations where it comes up where something has to happen. It has to happen quickly. So in answer to your question, Commissioner Sorenson, that's certainly one of those things that could happen. And that's one of the, again, this is one of those circumstances that it was intended to address, so.
So let me ask a converse question. If our administrator, in the next 30 days, while this is waiting to take effect, is forced into a situation where he has to close an area from the public, and then ultimately somebody gets trespassed from that closed area under his authority, is he personally liable? Or is he acting within his duties? You know, are we going to be, are we going to have to defend him? Will it be difficult for us? What's the legal liability in that 30-day period?
Well, first of all, to be sure, Mr. Mokra Hyskey, we will defend him under the Oregon Torque Flight Act.
Okay.
So there's a couple of issues with your hypothetical that it presents. Number one, we could run into the circumstance where, depending on who and what the enforcement mechanism is, they might just say, "Well, we're not going to do what you said because you can't satisfy us that you have this authority." Right? And maybe someone would even point to this and would say, "You won't have that authority for 15 days or 14 days because here's this ordinance." So that's the first risk that you run. I have already stated before this board, and I continue to believe that this language is merely a codification of what the practice has been, and it would be reasonable for Mr. Mokra Hyskey to believe that he has that authority, especially when it comes to, I think it's even more clear, I'm reluctant to use the word clearer, but clearer now that even the board has passed some of those previous, those other ordinances that we're going to, or those other board orders that we're going to review regarding his authority in emergencies. So I think he would be covered. But having said that, of course, someone could certainly raise the issue that this is designed to address, which is point, you know, where is his specific authority to do that? So does that answer the chair's question?
Yeah, I think so. Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Liken.
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to, if the second would allow, to remove the declaring an emergency on this item. I think we can take the risk for the next 30 days, and operating this way, as you just said, without it. So if the second would agree, I would be willing to remove the declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Liken?
We agree with the second.
I'm good with it.
So we have an amended motion before the board, which is to adopt ordinance 1507 in the matter of amending Lane Code, Chapter Six, without declaring an emergency. That's been withdrawn from the motion. So further discussion to the motion. Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Steve, I, maybe, Mr. County Administrator, how about that? Maybe I should say that.
Can't just say Steve.
No, you can't. So a question I have, so in your past practices, you've been an administrator at a prior county. You were a deputy at a very large urban county, large populated county. Question I have is that, did you have beforehand at your respective positions, did you have authority delegated in certain instances where, because obviously you have folks in positions, leadership, that either vacation, or maybe they're off to a training exercise, and there's that delegation in place, was that a common practice?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, is your question, was it a common practice to delegate authority in my absence?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, yeah. And I would say that I've done that here. Anytime I'm not in the office, I always appoint an acting county administrator, and it historically has been a department head, and we've rotated, and since we brought Mr. Rickoff on, it's been the intention to have more consistent backup, if you will. So I've done that in prior roles, and I've always done that here if I'm not. And then that acting, the individual who's appointed the acting in command as county administrator carries with them all the authorities that the administrator would have. So in this case, if the board approves this change in the code, anytime I delegate or appoint someone to be acting county administrator in my absence, they would have the authority to delegate, to delegate another person under this code language.
And to address one of the concerns that has been raised, although it doesn't require that it be in writing, I, Mr. Mokra Hyskey can correct me, but I believe that every time you've done that, it's been in the form of, there's an email saying, starting whatever date and time, this person's going to be the acting county administrator. So there is a written.
Yeah.
It doesn't list off that they're the acting county administrator, and they can do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. It's just that the idea is that that person comes with all the package that being the administrator has.
And then to address, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to do my best here. So on Mr. Michaels addressed section four here, and it shall be presumed that a person is acting without a lawful purpose, but it has the, I think, one of the most important words in that whole sentence, "if." And then you go subsection A, "Said person is in or upon any county-owned building or premises at times other than hours or normal business or operation and without permission to be there, or said person is in or upon any county-owned building or premises and upon request of a duly authorized officer refuses to disclose said person's purpose of being there, or refuses to leave said building or premises." So I'd like to take us back just for a real quick second to May of 1998 at Thurston High School. And what happened there? If memory serves me correctly, I may be wrong on this, but I don't think so. Mike Kelly, the city manager, was actually out of town. He delegated the authority to Assistant City Manager, Gino Gomaldi. Now, as you can imagine, at 8:00 AM all the way through the evening, chaos, someone in, because at that time, that was the worst high school shooting in the United States. Now, of course, it's not mentioned anymore, thank God, but it's the worst shooting in the country. So at that point in time, there were folks kind of moving all over it. CNN was in place, Fox News was kind of brand new. That was the first media, I mean, it just came upon Springfield. And thank God, we had our partners here in Eugene, University of Oregon, Lane County. We had a tremendous amount of infrastructure in place. But with saying that, you don't necessarily know who's who at City Hall, and it was gone way beyond normal operating hours of 5:00, 6:00 o'clock. It was well into the night. And so you had to have some sort of authority in place to figure out who's who, why are you here? And because obviously that was an active shooting presence, the shooter was apprehended immediately, but during that, the investigation started proceeding, you had to have some order in place. And while I'm a strong believer in making sure folks have free speech, but I think that this, I don't, when I look at what's being proposed here, I don't think it's out of line. And now, you know, things have escalated, and of course, the recent now is San Bernardino County, by the way. And so that has escalated into an area where chaos ensues, and you have to figure out who's who, why are they here, what are they doing here, that type of thing. And I know that, I'm not here to use an extreme, but I will say Thurston High School was a very real. That happened here in our backyard. I mean, that is something that I have personal experience with and saw it firsthand up front. And so that, and so I think it's important that when, and by the way, and I'm almost positive I'm correct on this, Mike Kelly being out of town, the city manager, and I got to tell you, the city operated as if he were here. Boy, I'll tell you what, they were trained well and knew exactly what needed to be done, where things had to go, with Chief DeForest. I think he was somewhere, and at that time, Captain Jerry Smith, and took over a lot of the part of the investigation, so it was a well-run machine. But it didn't stop at 5:00 o'clock at night. It was well into midnight. I remember Council President Greg Shaver doing an interview on CNN at somewhere like 8:00 o'clock at night, because of what was transpiring at that time. So while I'm using a, something that's probably, you know, it's not going to happen every day, it's important to have information, and it's important for us to have things in place. So if something like that were to occur, and there is a delegation in place, and that we want to make sure that not only our employees are safe, but it's for the safety of our citizens, period, and without trampling on First Amendment's rights. I mean, that's, it's one of those fine lines, but because I think of our own experiences of living through that, you know, Pat was a city councillor at the time, he knows it quite well. And so I just think there's some things we have, need to have in place. And I think, Linda, Linda, were you at the sheriff's office back in 98?
You know I wasn't. Were you? No. Sheriff's were.
But we still have folks here at Lane County that were.
Yes, we do.
In fact, unfortunately, the individual who was involved in jail operations, his daughter was one of those who nearly passed away and was shot in the head. And so, so I mean, there was, so I just look at this as, and I don't mean to use an extreme case on this, but I think what's written here doesn't go over the top. And I, so I'm comfortable where we are, and while I respect the public testimony, making sure we don't infringe on free speech, I just think it's an important aspect just to be for preparation.
Well, just to make, just to make sure everyone understands the way that that is, the way that that statute is written, is because we're a public building, that presumption of, if it's after, after business hours and those sorts of things...
Right.
That gives a reason to detain the person. The presumption is, hey, it's 11:00 at night, this building is locked and dark, what are you doing in here? And that just gives the officer the opportunity or the legal right to detain the person and ask. And if it were a county employee, they would, you know, pull out their county badge, and they would say, you know, "I'm working late." But that's why that, that's why it's written that way, because otherwise, it's a public building. So the presumption is people have a right to be here.
Commissioner Sorenson, we still have one item to get to, so.
Okay. This will be brief. I just wanted to kind of comment further on an aspect of this, and that is this delegation by the county administrator. I think it's been really great, Steve Mokra Hyskey, that when you've been out of town, or when you have been on vacation, or when you're otherwise not available, that you've put this delegation in place, and not exclusively, but increasingly, to one other person. And the reason I think that's important is I've been here long enough to see this happen, where it was almost like a ceremonial delegation, where one week it would be the Department of Youth Services, and a month or two later, it'd be the Public Works Director. Two or three months later, it'd be the Health and Human Services Director. And then it would be the human, you know, Human Resources Director. And I think it's better to have more of a tandem delegation, where, because the problems do come up, and they come up very quickly and rather unexpectedly, and these examples that are being given over time of where we don't really know the answer to the question, but we're more likely to have the routine functions carried out quicker, and we're more likely to have some better preparation in the nonroutine. And so I just, it's your call under the scope of this. You don't even have to do it in writing under the way the ordinance is written, but I would just encourage more formality in terms of the way you've done it, been doing it, and that somebody in the organization, which you've more or less picked already, but somebody in the organization is more consistently given that authority. I think it's better etiquette, it's better protocol, people in the organization know that that's the way it's supposed to go, and there's not any of this General Hague, no need to worry, I'm in charge, comment, which of course immediately caused people to worry and wonder who was in charge. So to me, the way you're doing it is the best way to do it, and this ordinance, if it's adopted, does allow you to do that in writing.
So any further comments on the motion? Just kidding. Got me. Seeing no further discussion, this is an ordinance, so we'll call for a roll. Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Liken?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Yes.
Commissioner Bozovich?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1 with no emergency clause. So we'll move on to item 16A. I can't remember the last time we got up to 16. And this is an update on active shooter training, speaking of, at the Florence School District and other current emergency preparedness items. And we have Linda Cook, our Emergency Management Program Manager, and introduce your guest.
Yes, I'll introduce Sergeant Hoberg. Chair Bozovich, commissioners, thank you very much for addressing this issue, or at least requesting a report on it, I should say. With me today, I have Sergeant Hoberg, who is a 13-year employee of the sheriff's office. He is the Special Response Team Team Leader, or did I get that right? Special Response Team Team Leader. And he's the subject matter expert on active shooter training, and he's here to talk with us today about the accomplishments made by the sheriff's office and other police agencies in advancing active shooter awareness and response capability to ensure a safe Lane County. He attended active shooter instructor course put on by the National Tactical Officers Association in September. He's certified to teach the active shooter curriculum to law enforcement agencies nationwide. The sheriff's office, in partnership with Eugene, Springfield, and Florence Police Departments and private security contractors, have delivered Alice Training to 10 out of 16 school districts, with two more to be done in the next month. And I just wanted to make a comment about that. If you can imagine delivering training to 10 out of 16... If you can imagine delivering training to ten out of sixteen school districts, that's an awful lot of people that get trained, and that training tends to spread. In other words, children go home and talk about it with their parents, spouses go home and talk about it with their husband or their wife, and so it's really one of those wonderful things that really helps the training get out there to more than just the people who attend in the classroom. To make sure we capture the competencies that have been developed, countywide, Sergeant Hoberg and I have co-wrote the Active Shooter Annex to the Emergency Operations Plan. This plan clarifies how police and fire will interface in these very high-risk environments to ensure the safety of responders as they go about saving lives. So my whole point in my introduction of Sergeant Hoberg is to express, number one, his expertise in the area, number two, the voluminous amount of work that he's accomplished in recent months. And I'm gonna turn it over to him to give you a more thorough update of everything that's been going on in Lane County.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. So Alice, you guys probably heard about it, we did actually for the county buildings, a lot of the county employees have been through Alice Training. That's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and escape, and doesn't have to go in that order. So what, basically, we're trying to get them to be able to do something besides turn the lights off and sit in a corner and be a target, so we're allowing them to use their fight or flight and leave the area if there's an active shooter. Like Linda said, we basically started in two thousand fifteen with the school districts. We've got ten done, and we got a couple more. A lot of the private schools have been taught also, community, commercial companies, and also other government agencies have also went through it. The, the two schools we have coming up are Crow and College Grove, and then we'll have only four left after that. So we plan on finishing all the school districts by the end of two thousand sixteen, and any updated training. As far as Florence, we kinda are planning a community-wide active shooter drill, and it's gonna be in April of two thousand sixteen, and it's gonna incorporate all the active shooting responses, as far as, all the way from the Florence Police Department responding as being the first agency on scene, and all the other agencies that are, would show up to the fire and emergency response, to the hospitals, and then the reunification process through the schools, the planning, Red Cross, the hospitals, everyone involved. So it's gonna be like a huge community-wide event. We did one in Elmira, Operation Falcon, and we learned a lot from it, and we planned a lot on that one, and we changed some things as far as the Sheriff's Office. Now this is expanding to another community on the coast, which is kinda more on their own over there, and getting them drilled up. We started, we did Alice Training for, so you saw School District in Florence in spring of two thousand fifteen, and then in the summer of two thousand fifteen, we worked with the Florence Police Department, so I saw Valley Fire Rescue over there, and we did drills. So we taught active shooter response to the police department, doing drills at their high school, and setting up command posts. We worked with the fire department and responded to warm zones. And a big thing with the fire department, it always been, hey, it's gotta be a cold zone before we go in and rescue victims. Well, we want them to come into a warm zone, so we worked on setting up a safety corridor, a casualty collection point, and getting the medics involved right away, and triaging patients out. So we worked with them on this, during the summer, we did a full-day drill, doing scenarios over and over with them, and getting them schooled up on how we want them to respond with us. We also assisted them in getting ballistic dust for their fire personnel and their medics, so that they could get into the area and have a little bit of protection in there. The UCC incident that just happened, the medics rolled in right away, like it was, the one known shooter was down, and they immediately got a medic in there and saved lives. Like the medic didn't even stop at the checkpoint and went straight through, and started getting patients out, which definitely saved some lives. So we did that in the summer. We also, in the fall, we did Alice Training for City of Valley Fire Personnel, so they knew what the students were gonna be taught, and so they knew how to respond, 'cause in a smaller area like that, they're gonna be the primary responders as far as personnel. Florence Police has thirteen or fourteen officers, and so they're gonna need help. And so we talked, you know, the fire department, hey, this is what we expect the schools to do, they're gonna rally points, and the fire department's gonna help with, you know, getting those places secure and stuff, as far as blocking traffic and all that stuff. So we did that in the fall, and when we did that, they invited a bunch of businesses and also other government agencies in that area to come to our Alice Training, and they all went through it. So we've gotten a lot of great feedback on that. And then just last week, they, the high school in Florence ran the students through Alice Training, doing scenarios. So the actual high school student body was involved in it, and actually went through the scenarios after being schooled up by the staff on it. And we did different wings, basically, and then we did a common area, because obviously the students aren't always in a classroom. So we kinda did different areas with them with scenarios. So they got their first kinda drills involved in it, and then, like I said, this is all leading up to a huge community-wide event, and that's gonna be hopefully in April there. And we're working with Blue Cell on getting everything set up, on getting it organized and getting observers and controllers and stuff, so it's gonna be graded, and we'll know what to work on, and then we have our goals, so we can be every month on that. So that's kinda Florence's side of it, we've kinda expanded beyond Alice with them, and are doing a community-wide thing for Florence. But the schools and the businesses, and today, actually, we had a meeting with the Building Code and Fire Marshal's Office about barricades, because obviously, there's the code enforcement side of it, and we don't want schools, you know, violating fire code by putting things on doors and stuff. So we met with them and talked to them about what we teach in Alice, and then what schools have done so far, and talked to them, hey, there really is no code when the shooting's happening, so that's the point where you can actually throw things in front of doors, the egress isn't as important at that time. So the egress might be out through a window, you know, and so during the shooting, we tell them, hey, this is the time when, you know, the rules don't apply, basically. And they're, it was helpful, because they were hearing things from one side, and then, you know, they weren't all true. So we got together and we're working on that, on the code enforcement stuff, and the meeting today was actually really, really great for that side of it, so that's kinda where we're at. You guys have any questions on Alice, or active shooter?
Before I turn it over to Commissioner Liken, I just wanna say, you know, thanks for the response out there in Vinita this morning.
Yeah.
Sort of surprised to see you here this afternoon in some ways.
So was I, and I was really happy that he came through.
It's early morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate it. Good, good, I think it's really important, and especially, I often, you know, I'm in awe of our county, and as large as this as it is. Then you have Florence, that's, you know, an hour away. And so the question I have really is not only the active shooter incident involved, but it's, it really comes down to the aftermath. And again, I go back to the Thurston shooting was, while it's in Springfield, the infrastructure in place was the second-largest metro area in the state. There's some struggles going on down south right now, because while I think the Sheriff did an amazing job, I think law enforcement did an incredible job on the day of, in really securing this situation, it's been the aftermath. While I know I'm not, while this is not necessarily part of your zone, but I think law enforcement comes into play here, I think it's important. And so maybe some thoughts on how there can be the continuing coordination where Florence doesn't feel like they're left alone, they're just out there by themselves. Maybe just some initial thoughts, just from, as a law enforcement professional, and I'm not, I don't want, I'm not asking you to get into the behavior health side and that inclusion, but I think as a law enforcement professional, maybe your thoughts, so it's all secured, but then what's going on two weeks later, or a week later? Maybe just some initial thoughts there.
Right, and we've talked to a lot of the schools we teach Alice to, which is basically at the time of the shooting. We've talked to about different other programs, like I Love You program, and different programs that they have sent administrators to, because of, you know, what we talked about after in the reunification part, and the stuff you don't really think about. The mental health is a big one, and people have thought about that a lot, and actually the Red Cross informed us, they actually fly people in, and they actually have a huge mental health department for Red Cross that, that, I mean, we've learned stuff from UCC too, as far as self-dispatching by mental health professionals. I mean, we always know police are gonna self-dispatch active shooters, but maybe people that aren't qualified. So we've learned a lot from all these different incidents, unfortunately, they just keep coming. And so Red Cross, we've learned a lot of what they can do, but we've talked to them about the aftermath of the backpacks. I mean, even that came up, like, in the Traildale shooting, like, they had all these backpacks in the school, and whose property is what, and so the Red Cross actually came in and actually color-coded backpacks and escorted. I mean, that's labor hours that, you know, their volunteers will do if you set it up, and, you know, and the meals for the responders and staff and all that stuff. So there's all this stuff we've been talking about beyond the actual incident, and we've learned a lot from them too, and we know that's very important. And we teach, you know, the rally points and then reunification points as separate things, and as far as law enforcement, the investigation's gonna keep going. We learned that the FBI and the federal government, well, actually, they have the resources, they actually bring in victims' advocates, and there's still some victim advocates, I believe, with still some of the surviving families, or the victim families in the UCC shooting. So we're learning about all the different resources out there in these incidents, and, you know, it's kinda ongoing, so.
What about resources for yourselves and the officers? And I say that because I remember having a really excellent conversation with Jerry Smith about this, and he said, you know, you, he said, I served two tours in Vietnam. You can have all the training involved, I mean, that you can possibly have, but the reality is, you're still not quite prepared. And I, so I, so I think the, and so I do think about our law enforcement professionals having to walk into a situation like that. What about for you in the aftermath of something like this? What's in place to set up so that you have a place to walk out and scream? So.
We do have CERT team and the Critical Incident Response Team, and they're available on incidents. I mean, obviously, we just had an officer that was shot, and CERT was available right then for officers that responded to that. And so we have those. We did learn from UCC that making people go to some of those things isn't always necessarily the right thing. Like, when they're ready, have it available for them, and don't make them go right then kinda thing, so we've learned on that, but we got a good support system in the Sheriff's Office, so.
It's important. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Thanks a lot. In a lot of these incidents around the country, and maybe this is true in Springfield and Roseburg, and ones that are a little closer to home, there's three areas that I think we don't see a lot about, but afterwards we hear about. One is people that are being sort of detained until they can be questioned, who have problems with childcare, medicine, and pets. People are, you know, they're not expecting to be at that shopping center, or that school, or that community college for, you know, nine hours. They're not expecting, they're there for three hours or two hours, and they're gonna go home, they think, to take their medication, or to deal with their pet, or to pick up their kid from childcare. And I'm just giving these three because I'm hearing about these, but I'm sure there's plenty of other examples. But how do we build that into these scenarios when we're, when we're training for them? Or is the focus really on kinda the short term and dealing with the main problem as efficiently as possible? Give us your perspective on that.
No, we work a lot, obviously, on the response, then stopping the threat, that's our first priority, the priority, you know, of life. And then the investigation part, like this Florence scenario we're gonna do, we're bringing our detectives over and we're working on that, because in the UCC shooting, it was fifteen-hundred students usually on campus, and maybe fifty of them knew there was shooting. And so really, those are the ones you need to get names and information, and maybe not, we talked about when do you do the interviews with them, and do they need to be run right then, that kinda stuff. And so we've talked about that and thought about that, and the bigger campuses like LCC, maybe those students that aren't involved, you get their information that they're on campus, but you could talk to them down the road. So it's kinda make sure, the other schools, like elementary and high school and middle school, we kinda have a roll call, but colleges, you never know. So you wanna get all that information down, so we've talked about that, when to do that. But the actual interviews and stuff with the people, there might be some information we need right then, but a lot of it can be done after they go home and reunite with their families, and then we'll talk to them. So we've talked about that quite a bit.
Are you also dealing with different sites? I mean, a lot of these seem to be in two big categories, schools and shopping centers, they seem to be. Maybe, maybe that's just my perception, but a lot of them seem to be shopping center in, you know, in Africa, shopping center in, I'm not sure where the others have been, but, you know what I'm saying, is that they seem to be, you know, the white male gunman goes into a shopping center, white male gunman goes into school. A lot of them are in those categories.
Right, the malls, theaters, schools, and workplace, there's a lot in workplace, actually, we don't hear about a lot, maybe, because it's a limited target environment, like, the soft targets is kinda what these people go after. And we also train for two different things now, unfortunately, we have to train for more of a terrorist-type attack versus the individual shooter that doesn't plan on coming out. So San Bernardino, they were trying to escape and then maybe head somewhere else, or whatever their plans are, which are different than someone that comes in just to end it right then, whenever their plan's done. So we kinda train for two different styles of shooters, active threats, but they fit under the same category, it needs to be stopped right then. And, and so, yeah, it's, the theaters and, the key thing with Alice, it can work everywhere. And so that's why we're teaching it in schools, we want these kids to grow up K through twelve and get that training. So when they're in the theater and they're in the mall, they know it, they can get away. But we, we're willing to teach this training to any kinda staff in any business or any commercial area also. So that's kind of our plan, is to get it out there, get it trained in people, just like fire drills, and it's a drill, and people respond.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Intriguing, you said there are four school districts still?
After the next couple weeks, we got these other two, and then there'll be four left, and then we've done almost all the private schools also, so.
All right, that's in all of Lane County.
In Lane County, yeah.
You know, I was at the Oregon School Board Association Convention Conference earlier in November, and Bethel School District gave a presentation on lockdown, were you a part of that?
Yeah, Bethel was one of our, we did Bethel and Eugene, with Eugene Police was the lead on that, obviously, it's in that city. So they're the lead, and then we, you know, we assist them, and then they assist us. So our Alice instructors are, will go anywhere and help them.
It was, it was pretty comprehensive, and there was a packed room, school district from all of the state, and Doug Mozam was the, from.
Right, he's the lieutenant in charge of Eugene's program.
Excellent. Well, this, well, we don't have much time to talk about it, I think we could spend as much time talking about this as we spent talking about the last one, and probably get a lot more out of it, but I really appreciate the work you do, and thank you, Linda, for arranging for this presentation today. Once again, I have lots more questions, if it's okay, I'd like to contact you separately from this meeting, just to learn more about, you know, about the intriguing work and, you know, lockdown and the actual process. And there are also technological advances that are occurring, that I heard about last year, identifying, you know, technology in schools that can actually identify where the active shooter is inside the school, that will help you responding, knowing where to respond specifically in the school, based upon a very active technology.
Right, and that's the difference between Department of Homeland Security's Run, Hide, Fight, and Alice. The kinda thing we went with Alice is because the information part of it, the eye in it, is the active information, and also getting rid of codes. So get rid of code blue and code red, those kinda things, because be descriptive, you know, hey, the shooter's at the office. That way, everyone away from the office can just leave. You know, so we're trying to, that's why we kinda went after Alice, and Alice is a program that we chose, because the information, we talked about a lot when we do the class, about the internet-based cameras, and at Reynolds, they actually have an internet-based camera, so you could see the actual threat happening, you know, so. And we talked, hey, if you get it, if you can give our dispatch center, or whoever's dispatch center is in charge of that area, the ability to log on to that, they can actually log on and give us play-by-play as we're responding, so it just gives us better information and we're not running through an empty hallway.
And the more different things you can look at, the, and the Alice training, obviously, is proven effective, and the.
is proven effective, and the fact that six, in the Bethel district, I think six hundred people participated in the Alice training in the Bethel district, so it was.
Bethel, Four J and Springfield were the big districts, for sure.
Yeah, right on. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So I appreciate the update on this. I will say that, you know, when you guys were in Florence this summer and had your little exercise there, apparently, the notification didn't get out to the entire community.
Whoops.
Yeah, it's amazing how much you can try and put the notification out, and people will still miss it.
Right, yeah, the media actually, in Florence, is actually.
I just happened to be at Saïssol Outreach Services that afternoon. They were having a grand reopening after their remodel, and people are coming, what the heck's going on at the high school? Fortunately, I knew.
Yeah.
It's an exercise. Oh, all these, you know, SWAT team and all this, and fire trucks and, yeah, it's amazing. Yeah, so it's, yeah, there was a small Facebook and social media eruption for a few minutes till somebody got the word out, it's just an exercise, please. Yeah, so, yeah, it's always amazing how much preparation you guys can do in announcing exercise, and get out there, and there are people that will not have gotten that announcement.
Sure.
You know, we know that, you know, as many times as we will advertise in the paper, a public hearing, and put it out there, and the news media coverages, and we'll still get people go, I didn't hear about this till ten minutes ago.
Right.
For sure.
Yeah. So we all are aware of that. So, yeah, I just wanted to play on something about, you know, the after effects a little bit. You know, one of the things, Commissioner Freeman was there at our ONC Counties Association from Douglas County on Friday, and, you know, one of the things he mentioned to us as he was coming in the door and talking to us a little bit, he says, you don't realize how long after the event this stuff goes on, and what you have to keep on doing and all that stuff. And he spoke of there have been two recent suicides they're dealing with, there have been resignations of emergency room personnel and EMTs that just are leaving the business now, and those sort of side effects, and, you know, some of, and some of the suicides seem almost unrelated, but it just kind of gets to be where the whole community will go into a funk, and you have to deal with that mental health issue for an entire community. It's not just the responders. And it was interesting to talk to him, also talk to him about, you know, how little sleep he got for like the next three nights, and, you know, he would basically go home and mostly just to shower and change clothes and all that, and then they'd be rehearsing for the morning, press conference at like four in the morning or something like that, and that whole coordinated effort. So it's great to kind of practice this in some ways. And I want to emphasize, while we're practicing active shooters and that whole thing, and particularly in dealing with schools, this sort of practice works for all sorts of different emergencies. And to get people to start thinking in the Alice mode, you know, it doesn't have to be a shooter. It can be a gas leak, you know, alert people, leave.
Right.
You know, do all the things you would normally do, you know, and then the responders are going to be doing the same things, and if it ends up in a fire or an explosion or something like that, there may be injuries. All the same things apply for a gas leak in, you know, a local shopping mall that apply to the Alice training for an active shooter in a school. You know, all the same activities, all the major response that goes with it if it's mass casualties involved. You know, so it may sound really morbid, we're doing all this training for something that we all hope never happens. There are other events that this training really applies to, and teaching children and teachers and their parents, the idea that you should think through future situations, you know, before you get in them, is so critical today. And, you know, something, you know, going back to the beginning of the year when I declared this kind of the Year of Resilience, you know, it's how you prepare for crisis sometimes and how well you recover. And if you've thought through a future crisis in your mind, you tend not to panic. You don't have that frozen moment. You know, you'll immediately go to an action of some kind versus the person that's never thought it through and is presented with this situation they've never been in, they'll freeze. That's the natural human reaction, is freeze. You know, and then it may take a while for all that stuff to kick in and start thinking logically and doing logical things. But if you've trained yourself to think some of this stuff out in advance, it applies for a lot of things. You know, I've mentioned it before, there's been great books written about the people that survive plane crashes, train wrecks, you know, tornadoes, other major disasters. It's almost always the person that's thought out the scenario, and goes immediately into an action mode when they get into that crisis. So, you know, I've said it before, the paranoid survive.
Yeah.
So we all have to teach everybody to be a little bit paranoid, not, you know, to extreme extent of mania, but it's good to think through those things. And what you're doing in Alice is you're teaching people to think that way. Think about possibilities. Think about when you walk into a place where the exits are. You know, what I would do if there was, you know, the fire alarm goes off, you know, which direction do I turn? Instead of standing in the middle of the room going, oh my God, where's the exit? You know, I've already, as I walked in the room, I know where the exits are, you know, kind of type of thing. So those sort of things, that adds to how many people survive an incident, how quickly you recover from that incident. So I really appreciate the training you're doing, and it's not just about active shooters. So was there some other emergency preparedness items you wanted to?
I think I might hold those until I come back with the Emergency Operations Plan, which shouldn't be too much longer. I'm looking forward to what Steve Dingle has to bring to the table for the board orders that you're going to be hearing about in the next meeting, or January fifth meeting, and with the completion of the active shooter annex, we're going to have a pretty good, robust Emergency Operations Plan to bring to you. Hopefully, that day, your agenda won't be quite so full, and we'll be able to explore some of the more, more of the emergency management issues. But I think in the interest of time, I'll go ahead and hold those. But we do appreciate your time and the opportunity to update you and hopefully give you some assurance. There can be no assurances when there is an active shooter incident, but as Commissioner Bozovich was saying, those communities that plan have been proven to fare far better than those that don't.
Yeah, definitely. And plus, I don't want to keep you too much longer, because while we're sitting here this afternoon, I've gotten four messages from the AlertSense messaging system, basically saying there's a flood watch, a flash flood watch, a winter storm watch, and about ten other things that are probably going to take your attention from Wednesday night through this weekend. So I imagine you want to go home, get a good amount of rest.
Yeah.
And start preparing.
Check all those alerts, right?
Yeah, and start preparing for the upcoming, because it says, all of them, as I peeked real quick, are starting Wednesday night. So you've got about twenty-four hours to go home and take a deep breath, and it sounds like you're going to be busy for the rest of the week, so. You and the Public Works crews and the sheriff and everyone else that gets out there in the weather when the rest of us are home and cozy, so.
We sleep, we don't sleep so you can. That's our slogan.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are down to review of assignments.
Mr. Chair, just a few things here. We talked about the time certain for OSU, and I can confirm that we're planning January fifth, 1:30 PM time certain for the OSU extension public hearing. On January 12th, we also talked about whether or not we were going to have a time certain for the Fernridge item, and we do. We have scheduled a 10:00 AM time certain on January 12th for Fernridge. On January 26th, we'll be back with the Land Management Division work plan, and we'll incorporate the task force concept into that item. I had mentioned that I'm planning to come back in March. I think that's when we're looking for, return back in March. I'll come with Human Resources Director Marc Edwards to talk about the process for my review. Two other quick updates, I will note. The, we did send a letter to HACSA and to the market districts as a follow-up to the board's executive session and then discussion on direction last week from staff. So Mr. Dingle sent those letters today, and we'll report back to the board when we have any further communication. And then finally, we were able to move up the meeting with Mr. Magnuson from January 8th to this Friday, December 18th. So I've cleared some things on my calendar to make that happen. So Mike Coles, our assessor, and I will be meeting with Mr. Magnuson on Friday, and I'll give you an update after. We have some resolution on that issue.
Thank you, I appreciate that. He already called and let me know.
I'm sorry?
He already called me at lunch and let me know.
Yeah, all right, good.
Please, please. So is there any other business for the board? Seeing and hearing none, I will adjourn us for the year.